Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Fairfax Town Council meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, 2013. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like the Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America and to declare that which stands one nation, I'm not invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call will show that all council members are present. And I would like to hear a motion for approval of agenda or affidavit of posting.
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Can we pull item 20 from the agenda?
Okay.
That's the issue regarding discussion of the MAP program.
Item number 20 is about the MAP program, Red Hill. I'm sorry. Item number 20 is about the MAP program and Fairfax's position or people in the community's position in relation to the MAP program moving to Red Hill. And as I understand, the school board voted on Monday night and they're meeting again tonight or something. Anyway, they voted not to do that and so that item is, we're pulling that from the agenda?
For now.
For now. For now. Yeah. Is there anything else on the agenda that we should not deal with? Okay, so that's just number 20. So do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second Weinsdorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. And in, we recently had a closed session and there is no action to report. So we met just before this in closed session, but that's nothing to report out of it. So the meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. And the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock to ascertain which items will be heard that evening and which, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And please turn off all cell phones or place them in the non-ringing position so that nobody's bugged by that. Okay? Thank you. So first on the agenda, here we have the adoption of Resolution 13-something. It's not on this agenda. Which is a resolution of the Town Council, the Town of Fairfax, reciting the fact that the general election held on November 5th, 2013 was, happened and declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law. So on this, the election happened and that's you, Michelle. Thanks.
The election happened. And as it says in the staff report, four of you who were incumbent were re-elected. So, do you have any questions?
Not really. Did I hear that correctly? No. Okay. So is that all we have to do on that? I guess we don't have to...
Well, you might want to make or ask if there's a motion for approval and take a vote.
Well, yeah, I'd love that. Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, second Bragman.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You also asked if anyone would like to comment on the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anybody like to comment from the public on the election? Okay. So I'll close the public comment section of that. And so we have a motion, Kohl, which one?
So moved.
Motion, Kohler, second Bragman. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that's unanimous unless you're abstaining. Okay, and we have to take another oath of office, correct?
Yes, you do. It was suggested that we take a break and there is some, there are some refreshments in the back. And I could give you your oath of office just, you know, the four, if you want to gather here quietly while we start the reception or we can do it publicly, however you like to do it.
I'm good either way. If people want to watch this, you're welcome to. And then we'll have some cake and it'll be done. Okay? Thanks. Yeah, sure. So the four members that were just recently re-elected, I'll leave you up here, Larry.
All right. Is this working? Probably the battery died. I'm not putting my mouth. Now it is. Okay.
All right. This is going to be better. So I'm going to give you all four the oath at once. So after I say aye and you repeat that, you each state your own name. Please raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
David Weinsdorf.
Renee Goddard.
Barbara Kohler.
John Ray.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
and Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter
Thank you. [applause] And now you can all take a little break and there's some refreshments in the back.
Conversation so we could get on with the business? Great. Yep. I'd like to bring us back into order, please. Great. Yeah, it's too close. Okay, is this about the right distance? I hope people can hear me. Okay, I'd like to bring us back into order. And the second thing on the agenda is the selection of mayor and vice mayor for the next year. So I could entertain a motion by anybody or do I have to open this to the public comment also? Okay, well, I'll open this to public comment if anybody would like to comment on the selection, who would like, the selection of mayor for next year or the vice mayor. If anybody wants to comment on this, seeing none, then I will bring it back, close the public comment, bring it back to us. Is there a motion?
Well, if we could just have a little discussion.
Discussion?
You know, for the last six or seven years, we've really just rotated the vice mayor into the mayor's seat and I don't see any reason for us to change that tonight. So I would, I would move Vice Mayor Weinsdorf, his name for mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, Bragman, second Goddard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, vote. Are you going to back out at this point?
Do you accept?
I accept.
Okay. Well, great. So we have a new mayor. And and so I'm out of a seat. And I'm going to leave this proclamation there.
David does first, mayor.
Anybody, anybody. It's, it's open. This chair is really terrible. All right, should I give him his, let me give him his award first. Yeah, and then have some fun. You got schmutz here.
Schmutz? Yeah, I left the proclamation there.
I'll give it to you.
Give that to him. There. Before we move on, Larry was right, we have a very longstanding tradition of providing the outgoing mayor with a great thank you gift. And in the case of John, who brings a sense of affability, good humor, and just being, I think, one of the nicest people that one could ever meet, a plaque in your honor. If you want to read it. And you should read it. [applause]
And I'm told I should read this?
You should.
So I haven't read it before. "A good head and a good heart are always a formidable combination." Nelson Mandela.
Yeah! Thank Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Well, well spoken. Well said.
And thanks, Michelle, for putting it all together. In days of your duty, would have taken on that responsibility, but you've stepped in so well. So thank you. Okay, moving right along, we have to select the vice mayor. And I also would like to echo what Larry said, that we move in, in rotation. And it would be my great honor to ask the council to appoint Councilmember Bragman again to be our mayor. Vice mayor? Vice mayor. Yeah.
Can I second that, too?
You can.
A second.
Can we do that by affirmation? Good. You're it. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Good. All right. All right, let's move this along as fast as we can to get to some of our more substantive items. Some announcements on the agenda. The Holiday Craft Fair in the Pavilion is coming up on the 14th between 11:00 and 5:00 and that benefits Focus. The Fairfax Volunteers' Holiday Caroling Wreath Making Potluck is the very next day on the 15th between 2:00 and 5:00 here in the Women's Club. And I see on the agenda, the big guy, Santa Claus arrives at 3:00 PM. Please bring clippings for wreaths and a dish to share. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring on that day from 11:00 to 2:00, so a little bit earlier, a horse-drawn wagon ride. Please do not pester our town staff between December 24th and January 1st. Town Hall will be closed during that week, reopening on January 2nd. And as we always, in this, in this time of good cheer, remember those who are perhaps in need a bit. The Fairfax Food Pantry remains open on all Saturdays from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Community Church. And as we say every month, volunteers are always needed. And since we have a very large crowd this evening, it's nice to point out that we do have a vacancy on the Affordable Housing Committee. If you have an expertise or a particularly dedicated interest in that, please sign up. It's an extremely important committee and we do have one opening. This is the time when we provide open time for public expression. This is on items not before us. Not before us. So if you're interested in speaking about the Chevron matter, well, hold on for a bit and we will get to it. Three minutes. Sierra, how are you? Newly sworn.
Congratulations, David.
Thank you, Sierra.
Congratulations, John. First thing I'd like to ask you, David, can I have an extra 10 minutes to disorganize my thoughts?
Sierra, no, because I have to spend the $26,000.
Okay. I've said this before, too, but you guys got sworn in and you talked about having mental reservations and I want to ask you, what happens if somebody gets there before and your table's taken for your reservations? What do you do?
You've been funny. What else you got?
Okay. I asked a friend on the street what I should say in open time and he suggested that I should tell just how much I love Chevron. But as I told him, it's already on the agenda tonight, so I can't sing a song about Chevron, for example. So I'm thinking like perhaps asking the council to sing me a song? Okay. Actually, I found these notes unattended in the airport. I kind of want to say the usual thing I usually say, and that is global issues are local issues. And the council gets crapped at sometimes for doing things regarding to what's happening globally. And I think the global things such as Fukushima, which is still spewing fracking, endless wars, drones, they're global issues and they affect us here. We don't have any money, for example, for our schools and our infrastructure and other things because for some reason, we think it's okay for it to go to wars. Endless wars at that. Why is that? Are we nuts? Are we stupid? Are we lazy? Are we apathetic or what? Anyway, the world we have, the world we get, actually, no, wait a second. How many here are here for the first time tonight? How many people don't come to town council meetings and just don't get involved? It's like, welcome. And where the heck are you the rest of the time? Get involved, folks. Start coming to things. The world we have, the world we get, it ain't them up there that's doing it to it. It's us. It's not the president. It's like, no ma'am, no sir. It's all of us, mostly sitting on our keisters or driving around, consuming everything and exchanging it for money, landfills, Fukushima's, Costco's, parking lots and lifeless landfills. It just, it ain't them, it's us. Why aren't we involved? Why are you guys here tonight? And where the heck are you the rest of the year and the rest of, rest of our lives? Honestly, what are we going to do about it? We create our world with every waking dollar spent, with every nuclear flip of a light switch, with every fracked gas degree of the thermostat we just turn up in our houses and every paved turn of the key when we get in our cars and just go Christmas shopping or whatever. Just what are we leaving behind? I'm asking all of us. Do we really need to go shopping for a bunch of stuff? Is that going to make our lives better? Do we really need to give gifts of more parking lots and more people in like Afghanistan, not Afghanistan, but Pakistan sewing a bunch of garments for us at the best deal we can get at Costco for $2.99? And what's being left? All that stuff is leaving landfills someplace else rather than living environments. What's going on with the water? It's like, where's the rain go? Where's it flow off? Does it go into a parking lot? Are the things living there? Or is it all a bunch of junk we're leaving behind? Anyway, I just hope we all get involved, get off our butts and come to like meetings, get on our government officials, because it's not them, it's us. It's like, what are we going to do about it, folks?
Thanks, Sierra.
Valerie?
Hi, Valerie Hood, 79 Dominga. I have money for the town from the Fairfax Tomorrow Film Night series, $367. And our next film will be a film about smart meters and it's called Take Back Your Power. And the filmmaker is Josh Del Sol. You can check it out online, it's a fabulous film. And congratulations to everybody. And it looks like a good night to be here.
Great. Could you give the check to, in the words of my sister-in-law, keep it coming?
Hi.
Yes?
My name's Jerry Pelletier and I'm 45 Hickory Road. And I don't know if I chose tonight night to come do this, but here we go. What I'm trying to make you aware of is Hickory Road has never been, hasn't been paved in over 50 years and the pavement is corroding and undermining. If you don't know where Hickory Road is, is when you come into Cascades, it's the first right turn, which is actually Cypress and they cross each other. It's a very strange arrangement. And I would say that we have like three football fields, a flat football field and a steep hill and then another hill to the end of the cul-de-sac. And it's corroded, it's, they've put gravel and it just comes down the hill. There's no way of determining where the street starts and where the sidewalk starts. They've just sort of gone around with the, with the pavement. And we've had two oak trees fall in the last two, three, three years that are on that. Also, it's not going to be a quick fix because there's no, there's no covert up on the top. So all the water has to come down from the top of the hills down to the bottom. And when it hits the flat, it slows down, obviously, and the silt and mud just accumulates on the street and...
Manager, where are we on potential paving of that street?
Actually, I would have to ask our public works manager. I'm actually not too sure.
We just received a report on all the streets and offhand, I don't know the, the order, but...
So maybe when we gather in January, we could have some clarification and we can communicate to you. Call into town, you don't have to drag yourself down here and we'll get back, or maybe we'll find a council member who lives nearby and, and inform him.
Yeah, we have one. He, he actually went for a walk with a few of us and to see, because one of the things is, is if you live at the beginning of it, you never go up that street, so you think everything's fine behind you, but it all ends up in your yard eventually, anyway.
No, I go up there every four years.
Yeah. I haven't been up there in years. So that means that, what do we do now?
We will get in touch with you and we will tell you where your street falls on our paving path.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Hey.
Ginger Sodders Mason, pesticide-free zone. Congratulations, David and Larry. I'm here as a point of information having to do with the agricultural commissioner of Marin County is proposing a 10-year plan to get rid of invasive plants out in West Marin. A part of that plan has to do with aerial pesticide applications. This is not just for West Marin. This actually is for any unincorporated areas in Marin County that he could do what he's planning to do. And also, he will, has eminent domain in this plan. In other words, if someone's not maintaining their property appropriately and they have these weeds or invasive plants there, then he has the right, under his plan, to go in and spray and get rid of them. So I would call people's attention to that potential plan. It was supposed to be on the supervisor's agenda on the 10th. It has been postponed and you'd have to just watch the agendas to find out when it's coming up for a vote. But that is proposed, a 10-year plan. There are problems with weeds out there or invasive plants, but there are other ways to take care of them. And especially aerial application of pesticides is not the way to do it. Thank you.
You're absolutely right, Ginger.
Thank you.
Ginger? Ginger?
Good evening.
We, we, excuse me, Gary, just one comment. We submitted comments to the county this week.
I just signed and sent it two days ago.
They should have them from Fairfax. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I came here specifically to introduce myself to the two new lady councillors. I haven't met you and my name is Gary Graham. My wife is supposed to be here, but she's not. But we own the nightclub in, in Fairfax called 19 Broadway. And my wife and I started live music there every night 30 years ago. And I'm happy to report that we, as a, as a business, had a little rough spot and I kind of made a mistake and gave it to the wrong people. I just brought it back. And now I'm happy to report that 19 Broadway has drafted Joe Montana of music to run. Jonathan Cordy is now the new partner and manager at 19 Broadway. And you will now see, 19 Broadway is going to come back to its roots, come back to what we...
As I featured the music that Fairfax wants, so you just watch I spoke. And I'd like to introduce Jonathan Cordy to the chamber members tomorrow night and introduce him to the community. But I'm temple to death that now 19 Broadway's back in the hands where this tradition of live music will go on and go on. Our gift to Fairfax is live music and we're so proud to, to present. So there you are on that. Now, one other thing, I think the two new council ladies, probably the luckiest council I've been in 30 years, keep my ear to the ground. You've got a nice, the town's great now. I mean, rock and everything, but it's really, you've got the greatest support. You filled in some positions recently that weren't filled in too well and you've got the great city manager now and, and you have somebody in charge of the money. And can I talk money for just a second because I'm a businessman? And, you know, we just gave it the office for, you have an extra $350,000 from the business community. And I'm going to ask you, in the future, please consider that you have a responsibility to us and to watch the money and to really keep us so you don't have to come back and either tax me or my businesses or my customers. Please try and figure out a way to run the town without hitting us up again because we're here to help you. We'd love you to even come know us, come to the chamber. These are the guys who produce the green that runs the, the town. These are the people that give the character to Fairfax. They're called merchants and entrepreneurs. Hope to see you at the chamber party and thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Mark Bizarro. I live at 100 Hickory Road. I'm up at the top of the hill. And I, I just want to say, the road's horrible. And we've been watching for years, other roads being paved. Ours has been neglected. As far as I can tell, the utilities have been put in the ground already, so it's ready to be repaved without being torn up, as far as I can tell. I've seen cyclists getting crashes on the hill because of potholes, because of ruts, because of gravel that's washed off the hill. And it's a, it's a dangerous road. So something needs to be done. There's dogs, kids, that could be hit by cars. It's just a real problem. So please, if there's anything you could do, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to ask whether or not it's appropriate to speak now on a subject on the consent calendar.
Give me one, give us five minutes.
Okay.
Any other open time speakers? Okay. Council reports and comments. John, the mayor always seems to look right, so we'll continue with that tradition.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'll flip over to my reports thing. So these are reports on what we've been doing for the last month. And I've attended a number of different meetings, I guess going sequentially. I met with a real estate representative for Marin Municipal Water District who controls a right-of-way that extends across the top of the Egger Redwood Preserve, which is, you know...
to us and to watch the money and to really keep us so you don't have to come back and either tax me or my businesses or my customers. Please try and figure out a way to run the town without hitting us up again. Because we're here to help you. We'd love you to even come know us, come to the chamber. These are the guys who produce the green that runs the town. These are the people that give the character to Fairfax. They're called merchants and entrepreneurs. Hope to see you at the chamber party. And thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Mark Bizarro. I live at 100 Hickory Road. And I'm up at the top of the hill. And I just want to say, the road's horrible. And we've been watching for years other roads being paved. Ours has been neglected. As far as I can tell, the utilities have been put in the ground already. So it's ready to be repaved without being torn up, as far as I can tell. I've seen cyclists getting crashes on the hill because of potholes, because of ruts, because of gravel that's washed off the hill. And it's a... It's a dangerous road. So something needs to be done. There's dogs, kids that could be hit by cars. It's just a real problem. So please, if there's anything you could do, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to ask whether or not it's appropriate to speak now on a subject on the consent calendar. Okay.
Open time speakers? Okay. Council reports and comments. John, the mayor always seems to look right. So we'll continue with that tradition.
Okay. Well, thank you. And I'll flip over to my reports thing. So these are reports on what we've been doing for the last month. And I've attended a number of different meetings, I guess, going sequentially. I met with a real estate representative for Marin Municipal Water District who controls a right-of-way that extends across the top of the Edgar Redwood Preserve, which is, you know, owned by the town. And it's in the county, however. And there's an access problem at the bottom of that. And what I have been working with is some volunteer groups, Boy Scouts and others, about the feasibility of building a trail down. And we needed to get the buy-in from the Water District. And I received an email about a week ago, week and a half ago, stating that they have no objection to our putting a trail in from the top. And just getting public access to this. So this has been a long time coming. So it's one of the things I wanted to achieve as mayor. I just kind of squeaked it in. They want to be informed of our plans and things. They want us... Everything to be at least 10 feet from the bridge that's along there or any pipe. So that, you know, because they plan on replacing that bridge at some point in the future and they're not sure when. But any improvements that we did would then not be in conflict. I attended a couple of fire board meetings. We have to search for a new chief to replace the old, who we are very sorry to hear is retiring. And it's a difficult process to find somebody of that caliber. But that is part of what's going on now at the fire board. I attended a Transportation Authority of Marin Subcommittee, which is basically dealing with safety to school. There's a shortfall. The budget has been cut by about 30-some percent. Maybe 40 percent, I don't know, from the state. And so it's kind of, you know, making a strategic plan going forward to keep that system, that safety-to-school program alive and well countywide. I met with the G-PIC here in this room, which a climate change committee, Subcommittee of that was in front of us later on the agenda here. If anybody's interested in being on a climate change committee, there's a bunch of different things to be done in terms of lowering the town's carbon footprint townwide. Marin County Open Space held a public forum about a week and a half ago where they were looking for public input on the EIR on their trails plan. The public comment period for that EIR is now closed as of last Monday. But they are having several other workshops this month. And I would go to the Marin County Open Space to see what their plan is. Basically, they are looking to restrict access to a lot of open space and change trails around. They have a plan for doing that. And it's quite complex. The EIR is 320 pages. So it's worth commenting to if you care about that. I attended the MCC meeting with many other members here in San Rafael last week. And then lastly, I had a phone conversation with staff at the Transportation Authority of Marin. And I'm happy to say that something else that I've been working on is a dynamic rideshare pilot program, which is basically... How do you put it in a sentence or less? It's about the... It's an app that lives on smartphones. And you can basically get rides wherever you are. And it's, you know, people can fill up their car to share rides going wherever. It's basically a hitchhiking where you get to know it's accountable. You know who you're picking up. And there's a small amount of money that comes back to pay for gas and things like that for the driver of the vehicle. So it actually has the potential to reduce carbon footprint of transportation to 20 percent about of what driving cars around public transportation is up at the 70 percent mark. So it's a pretty efficient way. And it's a pilot program with Fairfax, San Rafael, probably going down as far as the ferry or college of Marin. And stay tuned for that, probably on... In January to February, they're going to roll that out, the initial thing. And that's what I have to report.
Barbara?
Yeah, I attended an overview briefing with the county with Councilmember Goddard on the flood control retention basin projects proposal on Monday. Also attended the Marin Council of Mayors and Councilmembers meeting a couple of weeks ago with, I think, all council members. And we learned a lot about the Streets Team Project, which is a project in San Rafael to help homeless people, give them work to do, give them vouchers for food, and also get them jobs in permanent housing. So it's a pretty exciting project that started in Palo Alto, expanded to San Jose, and it's been brought to San Rafael. And lastly, I attended the Meadowway Community Meeting, which was talking about the assessment of the Meadowway Bridge that was chaired by Garrett Toy, our town manager.
Real briefly, I attended the Meadowway Bridge Forum with Councilmember Kohler and town manager. Attended Marin Energy Authority meeting. Marin Energy Authority just announced they have another $10,000 pool to assist people that are interested in putting solar on their rooftop. There's a $500 rebate program. So if anybody's interested in doing that or is in the process of doing that, they should get ahold of Marin Energy Authority and get in line and possibly get a rebate on that project. Attended the MCC meeting where we had the discussion about the program in San Rafael to assist homeless population in San Rafael. And also wrote our comments to the county about the proposed aerial spraying of pesticides in open space in which Fairfax requested a 600-foot buffer zone around all public lands in Fairfax to respect our no pesticide ordinance. And also requested a no pesticide in the watershed provision.
So this month, I attended several JPA meetings. That's the Joint Powers Authority. I work with the Zero Waste. It's the JPA for solid and hazardous waste. And I'm on a Subcommittee called... It's the Local Task Force and a Subcommittee to that, which is the Extended Producer Responsibility Task Force. I joined a coalition for... Something called the Coalition for Healthy Youth. It's something that was started in central Marin as a coalition between educators and the police department and the county Department of Health to look at drug and alcohol use and abuse in our teen population in the high schools. And an interesting correlation with that and the Subcommittee on Extended Producer Responsibility is that we're starting to look at how we can have some take-back programs that force the producer to have some responsibility and how it is that we discard the pharmaceuticals at the end of their useful life, which is basically where they end up in our medicine cabinets and are thoroughly abused by our young ones. I've attended several Ross Valley School Board meetings where a decision was reached to not have our district's alternative program, which is the multi-age program that's housed at Manor School. The decision after six months of deliberations and a lot of very emotional conversation was not to move that program, but for this time to keep it at Manor School. And we will follow up with some discussion and some people who I would... Would invite to come and speak to the community and have an opportunity for people to have a discourse about that. Let's see. There was something I did this morning, but I can't remember. So anyway, that's it.
Very briefly, I also attended the MCC dinner. They appointed me to the MCC's Disaster Committee, a charge that I'll be sharing in one form or another with Councilmember Kohler. Flood Zone 9 meetings are now ramping up. And with John as the council's representative to the Fire Department because sadly, as we'll be discussing in just a few minutes, the departure of our chief to well-deserved retirement. At this time, we are done with our council reports and comments. Town managers' report?
Very briefly, congratulations to the council members on being re-elected. And congratulations to the new mayor and vice mayor. And one item of clarification on the announcements. Actually, Town Hall is going to reopen to the public on January 2nd. Staff has determined that on the second... Oh, actually, excuse me. Town Hall will open to the public on January 6th. The second and third staff will be present, but we'll be working on preparing the... Getting ready for the upcoming year and be doing all our file retention and retention-type services and files at that time for those two days. So we'll reopen to the public on Monday, January 6th.
Fair enough. Okay. And with that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar first on advice of council. We're going to move number 6 off to, if the council agrees, to after number 19.
No, it doesn't have to be taken off of consent. It just needs to be voted on separately. So it can still stay in the consent area. It just needs to be voted on separately.
Ah, okay. Then with regard to 3 through 5 and 7 through 15 at this time, any thoughts by council?
I think there's public comment on one of the items.
Okay. Anything from anybody up there? No? Now would be the time. Okay, this is public comment on consent only.
If you'd please pull off 6 and 10 so that...
We pulled off 6. Why tell us on a busy night?
No, no, you didn't pull it... Excuse me, you didn't pull it off. You just said for a separate vote. I'm asking for you to pull it off so that there's a discussion so I can understand the competitive bid of awarding the contract to Sustainable Fairfax. And for number 10, I'd like to know the financial impact that's been reviewed for trying to pull our properties off from Prop 13. So if you'll please put those both on the open calendar so we can have a discussion with the reports and discuss by staff, I'd appreciate it.
10 is a resolution calling for... It's one of our aspirational resolutions.
Well, if I can hear the background of that and if we've even thought about the financial impact.
Okay, I'll tell you what. You know what, Michael? I will put that off until after number 19. Hi, the woman in the front row. You had a question on consent?
There was just a question about whether or not we could make a comment on during...
Right.
Clearly, just clarified it.
No, well, if there's public comment on consent item, now is the time to be heard.
Any item?
On... Yes, on the consent calendar.
But not during the consent time? Oh, okay. But do it before the item or can you do it after the item is presented?
We take them sort of as a glump. And so now would be that perfect time.
So it doesn't make any difference what order? Okay. Okay, I'm Mary Beth Brangin from the Ecological Options Network, the Fukushima Fallout Awareness Network, and the Fukushima Response Bay Area. And I'm representing all of those groups right now in urging you to go ahead and pass the resolution in support of the international rescue of the Fukushima Daiichi Nuclear Facility. Many people may not know that Fukushima has been pouring hundreds of tons of intensely radioactive water daily into the Pacific Ocean. And emitting from the triple meltdowns and the other damaged radioactive fuel rods, billions, billions with a B, of becquerels, which is a disintegration per second. Billions of becquerels per hour daily since March of 2011. So all of this is traveling across the Pacific and is going to impact us here. And not only us, but the whole planet. But TEPCO, the company that operates the plant, has lied and tried to deny the scope of the problem. They didn't even admit that there had been three meltdowns until months after it had happened. And TEPCO's motivation, as all companies, is to make a profit. And dealing with this unprecedented triple meltdown and accumulating radioactive water to deal with it is not within their expertise, which is why we're asking for an international panel to be formed by the United Nations and to urge this to happen in behalf of people across the planet. The Japanese government wants to hide the facts. They want to try to pretend that it's all just fine and that it's safe enough to hold the 2020 Olympics in Japan. And the US government consistently has policies that favor the nuclear industry. And it wants Japan to continue to be their nuclear bulwark in behalf of the US against China and Russia. So they've just passed a push-Japan-to-pass-a-state-secrets act that will criminalize information sharing and will make it even more difficult to get information that we need to protect ourselves from the radiation. What we need is to have an independent panel of experts appointed by the UN to make recommendations and have access to the site and to help this company that doesn't have the expertise to do what they need to do to mitigate the dangers. This may take decades. It takes decades in a normal decommissioning of a non-exploited reactor. And now we have three exploded reactors as well as melt-throughs to deal with. A study by scientists from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration and together with Germany's Geomar Institute have shown that the radioactivity from the water will be moving across the Pacific in a plume, in a concentrated plume, and will hit the west coast in... Estimates vary, but as early as 20... Early 2014, maybe March of 2014. And Japanese oceanographers have calculated the same thing. So we urge you to pass this resolution calling for this independent panel to be formed to help make recommendations and to ensure that there will be experts who are motivated by protecting the public and not just covering this up. And this is essential. There is no safe level of ionizing radiation. And that's according to the National Academy of Sciences Beer 7 Report that was published in 2007. And the reality of the full damage of Three Mile Island and of Chernobyl has been covered up and confused by the industry and governments who want to continue using nuclear reactors and weapons. So it's very important that we do what we can at the local level. And I really thank you for bringing this to the city council, John and Larry. Thank you so much. And we urge you to pass this. Thank you.
To follow up on what Mary Beth was talking about, I went to a series of informationals about this that were put on in the city. Stunned me into inaction in the beginning and then grief. And then I thought, just get mad and do something. So I am. So one thing I wanted to share with you is that there are some websites you can go to to get real news on this subject. One is eon3-emfblog.net. Another one is enenews.org. Another one is fairwinds.org. And another one is beyondnuclear.org. And if you'd like to get those websites from me again, I can do that. Also, in response to finding out that the plume was going to hit one of my favorite regions where I go to gather seaweed every year, which is Mendocino, the lost coast, one of our largest treasures. And the idea that our... That we could lose access to one of the tools that actually helps to fight radiation, which is our incredible seabeds. That's where most of our seaweeds come from, actually. And we're trying to find out now what... We know that some seaweeds tend to be somewhat radioactive anyway because they take up radionucléotides that are already in the seawater. Some of them take them up in a very big way. And we need to find out which ones we shouldn't... Which ones we shouldn't be eating. which ones we shouldn't be eating. We also know that the levels that we are allowed to ingest here are much higher even than Japan. We really need to be talking about that, and I hope there's something about that in this resolution because there are no safe levels, and it's cumulative in your body. And we see our friends and neighbors getting sick, and we know that we need to be really careful of our healthy states. So to that end, we are putting together a series of informational events for practitioners in our area, and we are going to be talking about protocols for radiation for making sure that we have the materials and the medicines available to us locally, and they will also be available in our local health food stores. We are going to also start having informational for people on Sundays that will be free so people can also start to learn because it's a very overwhelming subject. It's a subject that you first hit, you first hear about it, and you just kind of go into denial. It's a very frightening subject because radiation is forever. So anyway, I guess that's, oh, I know, the one other thing I think maybe Larry will talk about tonight is what the state's response has been to Fukushima and the radiation. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other speakers on the consent calendar? Sir?
Thank you. I'm Jim Hettle from the Ecological Options Network. I've been reporting on and helping to organize on the nuclear issue for almost 30 years, but I've never seen an incident as revelatory as the Fukushima ongoing disaster. It proves beyond contradiction that the nuclear industry is essentially a criminal enterprise. It's nuclear technology, both weapons and energy production, are the quintessential totalitarian technology. They depend on secrecy, on control of the population, of robbing from the public purse without the consent of the governed. And I think the draconian law that is now being pushed by the United States to be passed in Japan is, it rips the mask off the illusion of secrecy, of the illusion of transparency and responsibility and safety of the nuclear industry. And I strongly support your consideration and passage of the Fukushima resolution that you're, before you tonight. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Chris?
Members of town council, staff, and fellow citizens, I'm Chris Lang from Canyon Road. A point of order, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor. It would seem like there's a lot of people crammed into the lobby out here. They can't get in the room, so maybe after consent, you could move the chairs up or something.
After we give our proclamation to the chief, what I'm going to suggest is that we create our own little Fairfax mosh pit up here, and people could gather. But let's do it after we give the proper presentation to the chief, and I'll remind you. Sierra?
Regarding Fukushima, I just want to say thank you to Mary Beth and Valerie, and I can't think of your name right now, Jim. Mary Beth was a lot more eloquent with her words. I mostly just kind of grunt and go when it comes to environmental stuff like Fukushima. It's like, we all know it's bad. We know it's really bad. What to do about it? I don't know. But I know that doing nothing is a lot worse than just feeling bad and like sticking our heads in the sand and fighting or hiding from it. So you can't hide from it. That kind of stuff is affecting all of us, our children, everything's children, basically all life. And, you know, it's basically evil. Thank you for doing something about it, and I really hope that we all get off our asses and do something about all of this crap globally. Because if we don't take care of the environment, they're going to take care of us, and they are.
Thank you, Sierra. Any other commenters on anything else on the consent calendar?
Mayor, could I just say real briefly in response to what Valerie was saying? I did correspond with Disaster Preparedness Office locally about any preventative measures, and the response was a resounding nothing. I renewed my correspondence with them last week. I've yet to hear a response, but there was an inquiry made, for example, about distributing iodide tablets to schoolchildren. The state responded with absolutely not, we're not going to do that. And in the meantime, no one is monitoring radiation levels on the West Coast, and that is called for in the resolution, so.
There are some independent monitors, though.
Government is not doing its job.
Numbers three through five, seven through nine, 11, 12, 13 with a correction. We will be meeting in July, if the council agrees, on July 16th, not on the 9th, as printed in the schedule. 14 and 15. We will pull number 10, put it toward the end of the meeting after number 19, and we will deal with number six separately as a consent item after we vote on these selected ones.
I believe there's also a question that we'll need to address.
Okay, so we will deal with number six right after we vote on the other ones. I'll entertain a motion on this.
So moved. Go ahead, John.
Well, I would like to move approval of three, four, five, seven, eight, nine, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 on the consent calendar.
Second. Reed and Bragman, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's take more notes. What is this, junior high? All right, let's take up numbers...
Renee's getting all the notes. That one's for Renee.
It is junior high. All right, let's take up number six separately. And Renee, I believe, is going to explain that you're not voting. Go ahead.
I'm going to recuse myself from voting on number six, and my understanding is that since this is on consent, that I do not need to leave the room, but I will not be voting. Is that correct?
You do not need to leave the room. You want to explain why you're not voting.
Oh, and I'm not voting because I am a board member. I'm the vice president of Sustainable Fairfax, and so I, it's not appropriate for me to vote on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, is there any public comment on number six?
Thank you, David. My question is really just to have an open process for how the bid is awarded to Sustainable Fairfax, which I agree is good for our community, but for any group on how we're spending our public funds, and I'd like it to be transparent. So I see that there's an RFP or something, and if we can explain that process of how it was awarded, if there's competitive bids, if there's different opportunities to look at different things, if the scope of our work included different things, or if this bid has restricted certain things, I'd just like to make it very open if we would. Thank you.
Manager, can you do this in three minutes or less?
Sure. To answer the question, we did not do a competitive bid. Town has contracted with Sustainable Fairfax for these specific services for a couple of years. We've always been pretty happy with their services. It's a nonprofit. You're getting a lot of bang for the buck. It's definitely not anything staff could do for the money, and so that's why we have not done a competitive bid or an RFP or anything along those lines for these type of services.
Any other public comment on number six? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, that's Bragman and Kohler. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Okay, at this point, we could do something that is both sad and sweet. We're bidding goodbye to the chief, who has served us for over eight years, an extraordinary eight years of public safety, eight years in which everybody goes to bed at night comfortable in the knowledge that you and the fire department will have us in our town safe and sound the next morning. And you've done that in an exemplary manner and in a quiet way that has gone to the respect of all who have known you. I have a proclamation to read that was drafted by staff, and I think captures the feeling not only of the staff with whom you've worked, but the council, all councils that have sat up here prior during your tenure, and this entire community of more than 7,500 people. The chief is, became the fire chief of the Ross Valley Fire Department way back in 2005. And they put here that you've been attending the Fairfax Town Council meetings ever since. I would have to say that in and of itself is a deserving of what I can't imagine. And whereas the chief has held every rank in the Ross Valley Fire Department since he was hired as a sand and cement firefighter in '81, just one year before the inception of the Ross Valley Fire Department. And whereas the chief is respected by the town council, his peers, the citizens of Fairfax, and everyone who has worked with him due to his commitment, dedication, and conscientiousness while performing his daily activities. And whereas the chief has brought unique approaches to solving the fiscal and operational challenges of our Joint Powers Authority, resulting in one of the most efficient fire services in the area. And whereas the chief has presided over the operation and expansion of our JPA from two to four members, resulting in further efficiencies and superior service. And whereas the chief coordinated the response and recovery efforts during and after the great flood of 2005, directing and coordinating the repair and remodel of the fire stations. And whereas the chief coordinated and spearheaded the prevention and inspection program for the Ross Valley Fire Department. And whereas the chief is chairperson, completed an entire overhaul and rewrite of the Marin County Mutual Aid Response Plan. And my personal favorite, whereas, the chief has been the RVSD fire investigator, training officer, personnel officer, computer network administrator, strategic planning team member, standards of cover team member, board member of Firesafe Marin, treasurer of Fire Agency Self-Insurance System Board, and secretary, vice president, and president of the Ross Valley Fire Club. Now therefore, now therefore, be it proclaimed by all who know him, that chief be acknowledged and commended for his dedication, commitment, and exemplary service to the town and its citizens, and be it further proclaimed that the town of Fairfax is a much better place because you chose to work here. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Both the proclamation and a small gift, which, and they say we don't have a sense of humor. Says fire. Thank you, sir.
I'll say a couple.
Please.
I'll keep it extremely brief, but it has been an honor and a pleasure, you know, to work in this community for over 30 years. And I've always felt it was very fortunate to be able to work in a community in an area where I grew up, where my family's been for many years, and each and every day has been enjoyable. Maybe not every moment of each of every day, but each and every day has been enjoyable, and I couldn't think of a better career or a better place to work for all these years. And I thank you for everything. Thanks.
And we reject your resignation. All right, at this time, there are so many, if you wish to come forward and sprawl on the ground here, feel free to do so. Otherwise, we're going to move on to number 17. The council-directed referral of planning commission approval of the CUP, design review, signed permit, and traffic impact permit to open a gas station convenience mark on a site that has historically been used as a gas station auto repair business, categorically exempt from CECL. Come on, come on, come on. We've got a long night.
Mayor, may I have one request as your fire chief, so I can make the last few weeks here? If we can, when we move everybody forward, if we can just keep an aisle along here so we can have safe exit.
Unbelievable. Okay, please, come forward, keep an aisle free. No, it's not the time for public expression here. No, no. Shut that thing off. We're not taking public expression yet.
Oh, you're not?
Well, we will, but just give us a few minutes here. Kill the machine. Folks, the chief has spoken. We got to have an aisle. So what's new? Chevron, right. Hey, you know what? Let's take up the roosters first. That's okay. All right, staff report?
Great, maybe for the public, just like you pointed out, last Wednesday, we issued a placeholder staff report for this item, but this late afternoon, we actually issued a supplemental staff report that is now available on the website. So that's just for future reference for the public. But as to the recommendation this evening, staff is actually recommending that the council open the public hearing and then continue the public hearing to the council's meeting in January to provide the council more opportunity to consider all the comments and information presented at the hearing, as well as any additional information requested from the applicants or staff at this meeting tonight. Now, maybe as a little background, back on September 19th, the planning commission actually approved the project, approving discretionary permits to allow a closed or former gas station site at 2001 Sir Francis Drake to be reopened as a Chevron gas station convenience market. There were several discretionary permits actually approved by the planning commission, conditional use permit, design review permit, signed permit, and a traffic impact permit. Subsequent to that approval, actually, a council member, Goddard, submitted to the town clerk on September 26th something called a directed council referral. And under town code, direct referral process does allow council member to have the council exert jurisdiction over applications approved by the planning commission. And so this evening, this actually represents directed referral permit process in the sense that the council is allowed to conduct a denova hearing, which in essence means it's allowed to consider all the issues related to the application for this project. So in terms of moving forward, the supplemental staff report that you received this evening actually contains a memo that kind of lays out the different findings and things required for the council to consider regarding either approval or denial of an application. One of the things that the memo does do, it also clarifies the zoning for the project. Upon further review, staff has determined that the zoning for the property is actually highway commercial and not central commercial. But under highway commercial, what that does require is use permit. However, it does not require that any of the formula business standards be applied to this project. That only applies under a commercial, central commercial-type zoning.
Garrett? There are six people in the room who understand what you just said.
Sure.
Please, let's, let's, this is an extremely important point for purposes of the conversation we're going to have in a few minutes. Can you go over that one more time?
How about now? Okay. So maybe as some back, some background, back in August, not August, back in 2012, the council actually approved something called the general plan. Within the general plan, it made recommendations to change all properties' zone highway commercial to central commercial. However, staff has discovered that that process of rezoning all the properties has not been completed. And what that means is the zoning for that property is called central, is called highway commercial. And what that means, that gas stations are required to have a use permit. A use permit actually requires four findings must be made for that use permit. However, previously, we thought the property was owned central commercial, which would mean that it also has to meet the formula business standards. And so because it's not within a central commercial and it's highway commercial, formula business standards for use permit findings is not applicable. So you cannot, you cannot approve a use permit for a formula business since that no longer applies. You can only go after the, you can only talk about the four findings related for the use permit to see if the use permit meets those four factors as described.
You call it, you call it the formula. Most people in town know it as the chain store ordinance. And what you're basically saying is that this gas station in this location does not fall under the chain store restrictions.
Correct. That's a much easier way of stating it.
Three years of law school. Okay. See, if I may, please, when we get to this, many of you will perhaps want to talk about the chain store ordinance and the fact that this is clearly a chain and that under our chain store restrictions, what I, the reason I made the, asked the manager to restate it over and over is that that is not part of the conversation. it over and over is that that is not part of the conversation, okay? That site is not covered under the chain store restrictions. So when you're thinking about your comments tonight, remember that on one way or the other, that's not coming into play. Am I clear on that? Okay. Do we need further, if we need further clarification, Norma, we'll get to it.
David, Mayor, may I ask for further clarification from Garrett? Garrett, could you explain that where we are in the process of making it so that that is considered central commercial and the boundaries around what the central commercial will be when this process is complete?
Right, that's probably, I should turn it over to Jim Moore, our Planning and Building Services Director, and he can answer that.
Yeah, let me see if I can clarify it a little bit more for the audience. Back in April of two thousand and twelve, when you all approved the new general plan, which calls for the conversion of all highway commercial, which is auto-oriented, to central commercial, you adopted the new general plan via a resolution. We then received some faulty information that we should start processing applications under the new zoning of central commercial. However, because the general plan was not adopted via ordinance...
No, no.
I beg your pardon?
No, it was adopted correctly.
Yes, but I'm saying...
What we need to now do is complete the process by amending the zoning code, and that's done by ordinance.
If I, yep, let me...
My microphone is on, can you hear me now?
Yeah, the microphone, yeah.
Yeah, I'm as close to it as I can get. Can you hear me, okay? Okay, so the general plan was adopted by resolution that was done correctly. What we need to do is complete the process and revise the zoning code that's done by ordinance.
Right, thank you for clarifying that. We have to adopt the zoning map that was included in the general plan via an ordinance, and we will be coming back to you with revised language in the central commercial, which we've been working on. And at that time, we'll be including the zoning map, and there will be a public hearing on all those properties that are going through the rezoning from highway commercial to central commercial. If I could just clarify one point about the existence of this gas station being in the highway commercial. Gas stations are not allowed by right in the highway commercial. They require a conditional use permit. So as Town Manager was articulating in your staff report, it lays out the four categories of findings that must be made to grant a conditional use permit for a gas station in highway commercial.
I don't know how long it's going to take to introduce an amended central commercial zoning ordinance, but could I suggest that we adopt the formula store ordinance, that we expand the formula store ordinance to cover commercial highway in the interim? Now, that may not cover, that may not cover this current application, but it at least will protect us and give us time in the interim until we redraft the central commercial to prevent another situation like this from coming up where we are kind of taken by surprise. So that, to me, would seem to be a much simpler thing to do as an interim step, and I would like to see us move forward on that. I don't think it would take a great deal of staff time to amend the formula store ordinance to cover both commercial highway and limited commercial. Those are the two other zones that are, that should be protected.
Can I interject? Not at this time. Because what you said is not true. I was on the council, I was co-authoring this, and we extended it to all the...
Nicolo, 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 not at this time. When we open up to public comment, that'd be great.
You're telling people that they can't discuss it, this element of the law, and that element of law you have...
Not me.
Well, Mr. Troy has basically misinterpreted the extent of laws.
And when the time comes, Nicolo, I'm asking you to stop. You'll have the opportunity to speak, and everybody can speak on the, you have to...
You cannot limit the discussion.
Absolutely not limiting any discussion, ever, in Fairfax.
It has to be factual, because I was there.
Nicolo, thank you, thank you. Garrett, please.
So I think we can address Councilman Bragman, we'll check into that process to see what it would take to do something like that. But should I continue with the staff report?
Absolutely.
Okay, so what we're proposing this evening is actually that what you do as the council is you consider the staff report, then you allow the applicant some time to make his presentation. He has brought a series of his consultants to hopefully answer some questions for the council. Then we recommend that you open the public hearing, receive all the public comment. At that time after that, then maybe ask questions of staff and the applicant, so the council can consider more information needed. And a recommendation really at that point is to continue hearing to January. And the main reason for that is, we anticipated that you would receive a lot of public comment. We anticipated that you will probably receive additional information from the applicant. We know that you just recently received the staff report that contains a plethora of information for you to consider, and really, it would probably be better or prudent for the council than to have that time and get up to January to consider all that information, digest it, and then come back in January and continue, public hearing and continue the item. But that being said, I think also is one clarification for staff is, we're not limiting the public comment, we're just indicating that the belief is the use permit has four factors to consider and not the chain store formula as items to consider within the use permit.
Okay, John, Barbara?
Well, they're in the staff report, Mr. Mayor, and we can either read those out or go ahead and continue. I think what we're recommending at this point is if there's questions for staff, we also have our traffic engineer here, David Perisi, for any questions for clarification.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just suggest, since I'm sure folks in the audience have not had a chance to read the staff report, I know it's going to take a little time, but just going through those four findings might help people understand what are the findings that would need to be made.
There are four, and I'll read them out. "The approval of the use permit shall not constitute a grant of special privilege and shall not contravene the doctrines of equity and equal treatment." And when you get the staff report, and you should download it, you will see that there's an analysis by staff underneath that. The second one is, "The development and use of property as approved under the use permit shall not create a public nuisance, cause excessive or unreasonable detriment to adjoining properties or premises, or cause adverse physical or economic effects thereto, or create undue or excessive burdens in the use and enjoyment thereof, any or all of which effects are substantially beyond that which might occur without approval or issuance of the use permit." Lot of legalese. See, "Approval of the use permit is not contrary to those objectives, goals, or standards pertinent to the particular case and contained or set forth in any master plan, development plan, or other plan or policy officially adopted by the town." And the fourth one, "Approval of the use permit will result in equal or better development of the premises that would otherwise be the case, and that the approval is in the public interest and for the protection or enhancement of the community." Those are the, those are the four standards, okay? Okay. Hold on. With that, John or Barbara, do you have other questions for the manager?
First off, I guess I have some questions in relation to circulation, public access. I know in the original traffic study, there was a, talking about pedestrian circulation as well as car circulation. With sidewalks, I've dealt with sidewalks and crosswalks, and that's something that gets asked of me a lot because I've had a lot of experience with the safe routes and things like that. But it's my understanding, and I'd like to confirm whether there is any safe place to cross Broadway between the Little League Field School Street Plaza area and M&amp;G Burgers, for instance. There's sightlines problems involved there, and I have always been told that it's impossible to put in a crosswalk there, which a lot of people have asked for because of the limitation of sightlines. Is that true? I mean, it doesn't have to be right this second, if you can't answer, can...
The questions, Renee, did you have a question? I'm sorry, David, did you wish to...
I have a series of questions. I mean, is that, I mean...
May I, may I just interject a statement that I, that I wanted to make prior to us going into the questioning?
Okay.
Okay, is that all right? All right, so first of all, I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and I look forward to hearing the many perspectives you bring to the table. Mr. Salkey, am I pronouncing that right? Salkey? Salkey, sorry, has been a cooperative and respectful applicant, and I would like to encourage that we enter the meeting with that as the tone for tonight's process. I would like to clarify that my purpose as a council member is to do exactly what we are here to witness and engage in tonight. My strength lies in my ability to listen to the larger community and the great variety of perspectives which weave the fabric of this uniquely thriving town. We each enter our roles as local representatives coming from a perspective, but the role of a council member in a public hearing is to listen to all sides of an issue fairly and without bias. For the record, I filed a directed referral of the planning commission's approval of Mr. Salkey's conditional use permit for two thousand and one Sir Francis Drake because I had a great concern that the public would have strong feelings, which should come before the town council to be heard. I come here tonight as an elected official, ready to listen to the whole story, not having made a decision, and able to look beyond my own perspective with an unbiased mind. So thank you for listening to that.
Did we want to pick up, John? Do you have a question? David, do you want to respond to that traffic issue?
Sure, I can respond to that. Councilmember Reed, your question was about controlled pedestrian crossings across Broadway near the project site. There aren't, there aren't any marked crossings in that area. Sightlines are pretty good, but because there's no real traffic controls, you know, pedestrians do need to, would need to cross the street at an unmarked location, you know, in front of moving traffic.
Okay, so generally, those traffic controls in the normal place for a crosswalk is at, is at an intersection?
Correct, yeah.
So they have a stop sign there, and it's a logical place. And I guess along that stretch there, that connecting there, one of those crosswalks would probably be Bank Street. Is that correct?
Could be.
Yeah, okay. Let me see, and I guess the right-of-way goes right up pretty much to the curb that Broadway is on?
On the project site.
Correct, yeah.
It is pretty tight right-of-way in that area, and the applicant is proposing to add a sidewalk along their front edge as much as practical.
And just as much as practical, is that up to the building sort of thing?
It's, yeah, as much as they can within the right-of-way, up to the building and down to the easement.
Right, okay, so, but for instance, the sidewalk that's next to the First Federal Savings Bank that continues up and pretty much ends at the wall of that building, that would not be continued along there?
Correct. What the applicant has proposed to do is provide a sidewalk as much as practical peripheral to their site.
Okay, yeah, it's unfortunate that buildings, is that normal to build a building over the place where the sidewalk should go?
No.
Okay.
But there is limited right-of-way in that area. I mean, that's something that can be further evaluated.
Okay. All right, let me see. So are, is there any other reasonable route that people could take, especially kids, where there would be a crosswalk in your understanding? I mean, I didn't see one, but I guess I'm looking for confirmation.
You know, it wasn't addressed in the, in the study, but that is something that could be further, further evaluated.
Okay.
Can I add? I'm just, I'm just wondering, how is it in a traffic study that people determine whether the sightlines are pretty good?
What is evaluated in Fairfax's code for the traffic studies, the emphasis is on number of car trips that are being generated. Other things are often looked at as needed. In this case, if there is a sight distance issue, you do need to, you look at not if it's good, but if it meets the standards, particularly for the driving speed of cars that are going through the area. So that, you don't look at it if it's good, but if it does meet, you know, the conditions based on actual driving conditions that, you know, motorists would see and pedestrians could see around curves, be it a vertical curve or horizontal curve, or if there's some obstructions. So it's very important to look at that.
It calculates numbers of riders and lack of sidewalks and things like that.
All that, all that is evaluated. Yes, all that is evaluated.
I guess, so in your traffic, traffic planning opinion, there is, given the general speed of cars around there and the safe, general safety, is there a place where we can put a crosswalk in there, aside from someplace like Bank Street?
I think that would need to be looked at further. Councilmember Reed, particularly the, if a crosswalk was to go in, where would the best location be? And are there other amenities that could go, that could supplement a crosswalk, such as extending a curb out or putting Refuge Island in the middle of the street, ways to really improve the pedestrian crossing experience?
Okay, so different ways to skin a cat, but we got to look at it.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, okay. And I guess one of the questions I had, this is not to do with pedestrian sidewalks or anything like that, whether franchises generally, and maybe this is a question for staff or in general, whether, whether franchises are allowed to charge extra for various services. For instance, like a, like a car wash, you see that kind of thing happening. And whether the franchise agreement would be limiting that to any particular thing, and you'll see why in a minute, why I'm getting at this. And I don't really know who I'm asking this question of, whether it's town staff or the nature of, maybe it's Cora, the microphone connects in?
How about now? Okay, I think Mr. Mayor and council members, maybe depending on your level of questions, if it's not clarification questions, but as you get to questions that are more specific for the applicant, it would probably be better really to hear from the applicant, their presentation, and then you could decide whether to ask questions then or wait till after public comment to ask questions, just to try to facilitate the discussion, because that's clearly an applicant question.
Yeah, well, yeah, and I can see that several of my other ones are like that, so I'm happy to defer these questions until later. So thank you.
Okay, with that, this would be the opportunity to bring the applicant forward with his consultants?
Could we, could we do one thing before we do that, before we hear from the applicant?
A adjourn for the night?
Yeah, well, there you go. I just, I'd just like to hear from Councilmember Goddard and Councilmember Bragman about how they come into this hearing and anything that may have been posted on the internet.
I'll take, I'll take that one. What she's, what she, what she's asked me to address is there's a, there was a, there is a Facebook page or site, No Chevron in Fairfax. And when it was originally put up, I guess it's what, it's like an open page, and the creators invited various members of the community to be on the page, including me. I did not join the page, I did not ask to be invited, but my name appeared as some, as on the page. And when it did, I realized that was not a good thing, and I immediately emailed the organizer, I don't know what it's called on Facebook, to remove my name. And... And my name was removed, you know, probably within an hour of it getting posted. There's actually some protocols that you go through on your own Facebook page to remove your name, which we did, my wife Holly did that for me, actually. And I, you know, I just want to affirm that I'm coming into it with an open mind, I've been here 10 years. I know what my job is. My job is to be fair and to listen to all sides before I make a decision and to make any decision based on the facts that get into the record, and that's what I intend to do. So, I just want to confirm that to the applicant and just make that statement to the public because that's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
Yeah, and I think I clarified that in my statement, but I also had a few moments on the Facebook page. I think how it happened was not just an invitation to the Facebook page, but people were added. So, I'm not experienced with that, but when I was told that I was there, I did, with all my technical expertise, spent the next three hours trying to de-add myself. And I should have called Holly. But that's what happened to me as well. So, that was not my choice of signing up to take one side or the other of the issue and that I assure you, I really can listen and hear the whole story. So, I look forward to doing that tonight.
Okay. With that, the applicant, please, and your consultants.
Is that working? So, my name's Ron Jacobs. I am with PM Design Group and we are the architects on the project. And I just want to give a brief overview of what we're proposing on the project. Obviously, everyone knows it's the station that's been closed down for a couple of years at 2001 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. The main points, what we're proposing to do is convert the existing automotive service base to a convenience store. We're doing, we're refacing the existing building, repainting it, there's a colored rendering of it there. So, we're repainting the building, wrapping the existing fascia, and we're putting a new standing seam roof on the mansard. And then on the canopy, we are wrapping the fascia and installing the same standing seam mansard. And we've worked with the Planning Department and the Planning Commission ordinances on doing what we call a muted image of the Chevron standard image. We've removed the blue from the canopy fascia and the logos from the spanners, which are the boxes over the top of the dispensers and also the logos off of the fuel dispensers themselves. There was discussion about the color of the fascia on the canopy, and I believe the ordinance approved it as either white or another color called Cafeole, which is also on the sales building. It's the lighter brown color. We've showed it with the white fascia. We're really open to either white or Cafeole. We've reduced the signage on the canopy. And just trying to upgrade the entire facility. Some of the other things we've done is we're installing new landscaping and irrigation, installing new fuel dispensers, actually. Inside the C store, we're upgrading the restrooms. They'll both be accessible and open to the public. On the site itself, we've paid special attention to lighting, installing LED lighting on the canopy. The lighting will be recessed into the canopy deck. The fascia of the canopy will extend down six inches beyond the face of the, or I should say the deck of the canopy to reduce any light overflow. The light will be focused right over the dispensers. And we've made special efforts to reduce any light spilling off of the property. Some of the other things that we've tried to incorporate, we're installing bike racks at the facility. We're installing new sidewalks along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and also along Broadway. We're going to be installing a car charging station, recycle bins, and solar power. We're looking into the feasibility of doing solar. The site has five parking spaces, dedicated parking spaces, and eight parking spaces at the fuel dispensers. The, I'm going to introduce the traffic engineer next, but we were asked to look at the feasibility of installing a new driveway at Broadway, basically an extension of Bank Street, and determined that that is a possibility. So, what else I've provided are photos of other Chevron facilities that have what we call the muted image. It shows facilities that don't have the Chevron corporate image colors, just to give you an idea of what those stations look like. So, all in all, we've worked with the Planning Department and the Planning Commission to get their unanimous approval on the project and open it up for questions.
Do any of the council members have questions of the applicant's representative?
You mentioned sidewalks. My understanding, and I'm glad to be able to ask you this, is that there was potentially not the space to do that on Broadway, but has it been determined otherwise?
Yeah. Behind the building, basically the rear wall of the building is right on the right-of-way. There's maybe a strip of two feet to 18 inches. So, installing a sidewalk along the entire roadway is not possible. So, what we've done is at the corner of the site nearest, I guess the best way to describe it is Broadway and Bank Street, we have extended the existing sidewalk from Broadway as far as possible to that rear wall on the station. A sidewalk needs to be a minimum of four feet wide. So, we've done that, or we're proposing to do that as much as possible.
Are there questions of the applicant?
So, first I would like clarification. I have some questions that I think would be more appropriate to direct to the applicant specifically, if they're not architecture-related, shall I ask you those as well?
You can ask me and then Arash, the owner, will be speaking also.
Okay, well, I'll wait until...
I actually have one that's related to the previous.
Well, I do have one related to this. So, you mentioned that there were five dedicated parking spaces. In my review of the plans, it shows four. And I'm wondering about that, but also, at least when there were five, there was a requirement that the only way to get out would be to back out on Sir Francis Drake of those parking spaces. So, I just, I think I need clarification, maybe there's additional information that should be submitted in the January meeting, but it seems like there's different information...
There are five dedicated parking spaces shown on the site plan.
Okay, and so, to clarify then, with the five dedicated parking spaces, people would have to back out on Sir Francis Drake, correct?
No, that's not... The traffic engineer is going to speak to that?
Okay, so he's going to speak. Okay, I'll wait then.
Okay.
Questions of this part of the applicant's team?
May I?
Larry?
Just as far as the lighting and the logo, I can't really see the one, the stations that don't have the branding, and maybe we could pass that up here at some point, just so we can take a look at it. I mean, given the clear intent of the general plan and the proposed zoning to sort of keep this as a historic area, what about eliminating the corporate branding on the canopy? Is that done? Is that a possibility? Should I, maybe, maybe I should be directing this towards the applicant?
Actually, that would be more a question for me. That is something that we're willing to discuss, absolutely.
Okay. Because I know we've got this snafu with the zoning ordinance not having been officially passed as an ordinance, but, you know, the general plan is very, you know, specific about the intention for that area, to actually change it from the old 1950s-style planning with parking lagoons and very car-oriented towards a more walking pedestrian-friendly area. So, that's something I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant. I don't know if this is the right time to be asking this either. It's good to hear there's going to be bike racks, bike racks. I know it's not just, you know, there's a lot of adult cyclists in town, but there's going to be kids, you know, and you're entitled to have children customers. I'm just wondering, you know, what the product mix is going to be in the store, whether there's going to be any kind of healthy and nutritious products available for children or whether we're going to be sort of creating an attractive nutritional nuisance by putting in a convenience store and what the Extra Mile franchise really will bring to the community as far as the actual products that it's going to be purveying from the site. So, that's something I'd also be interested in hearing from the applicant about.
I can touch on it. The owner does have the flexibility of adding what they call Flex Space. And the, Flex Space? The idea was that we were going to introduce products that were on the healthier side related to, also, we've been asked to put in bike repair kits, tire repair kits, things along those lines. So, there is some flexibility within the layout of the store to add more community-specific items. They are not tied down to a specific set of items for the entire store.
And what about the possibilities of a franchise inside the franchise? I've seen that Starbucks Coffee is featured at Extra Mile. Are there, so, you get a franchise within the franchise kind of setup, and I've seen, if you go on a Highway 80, you can even get food franchises inside franchises. So, you know, clearly, there's a pretty well-documented history of us disfavoring that kind of commercial development. You know, I'd like to hear the applicant talk about that type of development at the site or whether or not that's going to be happening. So, and these are things I'm going to, you know, I don't expect instant answers. I think we're going to go through a process here tonight of us asking questions and trying to get information and addressing concerns, so...
But let's, you're going to be speaking, so you can address that issue.
Okay, okay, well, I don't want to monopolize it now. I've got another series of questions, but I'll just pass the baton.
Sure.
Yeah, I had one other question that's architecture-related and definitely it's related to the sidewalks and things too. Was any thought given to, at this, you know, the space where there is for a sidewalk on the Broadway side, was there any thought given to putting doors at the ends of those sidewalks to have pedestrian entrance into this store? Or perhaps even continuing it on that level to the other door?
The piece of sidewalk that we're installing along Broadway, it does have access to the station.
So, there would be a door at the end of the sidewalk?
I wouldn't call it a door, but there's a ramp that goes down into the sidewalk, into the site.
Okay. But it wouldn't be continuous with the other way? You see what I'm driving at with the doors, you know, I mean, basically if you have pedestrians able to go through that part, you know, maybe you have to do an internal wall or something like that.
There's an existing sidewalk that it doesn't really touch the site. It stops at the corner of the site on Broadway. We're extending that sidewalk as far as we can, and at the end of that sidewalk, there is an access into the station site.
Okay, but not from the one over at the end of the bank, on the bank side of it?
I'm sorry.
Well, there's another, if on the west side of the property, there's a sidewalk that ends pretty much at a brick wall. At the west end of that on Broadway.
Okay.
So, I guess my question was there, it appears not, but, you know, I guess I was saying you might want to think about if you had doors on both sides of that, especially if you had some, you know, in effect, an internal sidewalk, and you could even put a wall next to that so that it would be separated from the business.
The other thing to consider is if the driveway does go in or off of Broadway, it's pretty going to much eliminate all the sidewalks along that stretch.
Well, not if there's a crosswalk at the stop sign. I'm trying to get people across the street safely and, you know, probably to the store also, you know, I mean, it would probably increase your business if you had pedestrians walking up. Just trying to figure out...
We're definitely willing to look at that.
Okay.
Can I just ask for clarification? There are several people going to speak, but I think we're all sort of grasping at who do we ask what of? So, I have a parking question. Maybe we could just differentiate who we should direct these questions to?
You can ask onsite parking questions to me.
Okay, so, one question I have from looking at the plan is that you've determined five spots on the site without the bays?
There's five designated parking spaces.
Okay, so, is, one of them, from what I see, is right at that Bank Street extension, which is the public right-of-way?
Yes.
So, I guess my very simple question is, what if, given that that's the town's right-of-way?
Right.
What if that went away because the town had decided to use that space for something or approved a different permit for that space, which is the town's? What would happen to the project in terms of the limited parking that that creates?
If we were to eliminate one parking space... Well, if we were to eliminate one parking space, then we would have, uh, basically twelve parking spaces onsite, including the, uh, parking at the dispensers, majority of the customers are going to be parked at the dispensers and walk into the convenience store. The, the town's code doesn't address it, but the majority of, of codes allow the dispensers to be counted as parking spaces, because the majority of, uh, their customers are pumping gas and entering the convenience store.
So they would be, but they would be sitting at those bays in case there were people trying to come in from westbound, uh, I mean, sorry, from eastbound Sir Francis Drake, there's not a lot of space between there and the bays if cars are parked and stopped there in order to shop?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a tight site, definitely.
Okay.
Um, we've, we've, we've maximized the parking onsite, um, working with, with the city and the traffic engineer.
Mm-hmm, and so then questions later about circulation and space between the right-of-way and all of that, I'll, I'll wait to address to your engineer, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
Could I, could I just follow up, um, so, do you got, you guys acknowledge that there's a public right-of-way that goes through the property? I mean, is, are, is there any debate about that, or maybe I should direct this to staff? Do, does Fair, does Town of Fairfax have a public right-of-way that goes through the site?
Yes, yes, and the applicant was required to provide a survey, and we, um, confirmed that the town can take that and use it, and it will not interrupt the operation of the business.
Really? Because when I, when I looked at the traffic impact report, it indicates that some of the turning radiuses go into the right-of-way.
It's, it's, we didn't analyze what would happen after the town took the right-of-way. David, maybe I can defer to you.
Okay, ha- has, has, has the right-of-way been, um, if it's been surveyed, has it been staked out so that we can see where the actual right-of-way is?
Yes, the, the survey was provided on the plans, David, perhaps you can address the turning radiuses.
Sure, um, if the facility was constructed as currently proposed, uh, the, um, eastern driveway on Drake would be, would be, um, partially within that Bank Street extension area, um, so, so the tanker trucks would certainly have to traverse that area, uh, the easement area. If in the future the town decided to actually develop Bank Street as, as a real street, um, that wouldn't affect the service, or the, uh, the Spencer bays or the building on the site, certainly would mean one less parking space onsite, but also, um, if the service station or the gas station was to remain in place, you'd have to think closely, very clearly about what you want Bank Street to be and look like, including the traffic controls on, on either end, is it one-way, is it two-way, um, generally, you'd probably have a continuous curb cut along Bank Street because of how the, uh, the Spencer bays, you know, are set up, would be set up at the gas station, so you couldn't just have a small driveway there, it'd probably be an open, open driveway along the whole west side of the future Bank Street extension, if that makes sense. So this could dictate how you would actually develop or make Bank Street and how it'd look in the future, does that make sense?
Yes, and, and m- my question, just to follow up, okay, i- if, if the eastern driveway is in the town's right-of-way, isn't that an encroachment into the public right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm just going to ask, just if you, okay.
They would be required to get a re- permit as a condition of approval.
Pardon me?
Like, prior to get a encroachment permit as, as part of this project.
Okay, I, I went through the application, I didn't see an application for an encroachment permit in this application. Now, my question is, does the town have a permit process to get an encroachment, uh, on public rights-a-way?
You know, one of the conditions of approval was that they formalized the encroachment that they have been using for many, many years, and I know that this was discussed when the town put in that parking area, it was acknowledged that this gas station was using part of that easement, one of the conditions of approval is that they formalized that by filing a recorded and revocable encroachment permit, so that it's at, recorded at the county and attached to the deed, so that it's clear to any future purchaser that that's not their property, uh, but they, they are proposing to continue to use it and have been using it for many, many years.
Okay, my question is, does the town have a process, an encroachment permit process?
We do, and there's, there's no, um, clear record of, of what happened, there's no staff people that are still around when this all got developed, but my understanding is, the town acknowledged that they were using the public property when they improved that parking area.
Okay, and my question is, since the original owner of the property, it's been out of, out of operation for two years, the town currently had, I'm asking a question.
Oh, I, okay.
Do we currently have a process for encroachment permits?
We have a process, if you're building structures in the public right-of-way, you have to go through the process to get an encroachment permit.
Okay, um, what about?
They weren't proposing anything new in that area.
Okay, what about, what about taking over a public right-of-way? Wha- in, in other words, i- if, if an operation, if a business comes in, which will require the occupation of a public right-of-way, and maybe I should direct this to council, doesn't the applicant need to get an encroachment permit? And, and I'm not asking for instant.
Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of questions connected with this, and that's one of the things that we're going to be looking into, and that's one of the reasons for the request for the continuance until January.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, you know, my reading of the code is that there is a, that the Town of Fairfax has a process for applicants to get encroachment permits. I looked at the application very carefully, there's no application for an encroachment permit in this application.
The, the encroachment permit would be filed at the time that the CD's construction documents were submitted to the building department, so an encroachment permit would need to be approved and pulled prior to pulling a building permit. It doesn't happen at this phase of a project.
Okay, well, I, I'm just, I think that this project may need an encroachment permit that has not been done, um, that it's, it's incomplete, and that public right-of-way is public property, and this council has no right, we have no right to give public property away or to dedicate it to private use without going through the process that I think is set forward in our code.
The building official could probably address that, at, at what point?
Perhaps, perhaps I can address that, I, I think as clarification, we could check into this, but typically how it works is in the planning application, they're going to submit their planning application, and we would not require an encroachment permit at this time, prior to occupancy, they would need to get an encroachment permit, because there's no need for us to issue an encroachment permit unless they have a use permit, and if they grant a use permit, then usually we'll, we'll grant a revocable encroachment permit with conditions, so it's usually a separate process and it's administrative. So for example, if there's outdoor dining, usually it'd be a process, and then it's a revocable encroachment permit, so they could sit, place tables on the sidewalk, um, not blocking access, so it's, it's that type of process, so within the application itself, they're not required to get an encroachment permit at this time, but they will prior to taking occupancy, and generally, we address it when they start submitting building permits.
Okay, w- when I went through the record of the planning commission, one, one of the findings made by the planning commission was effectively giving an encroachment permit as part of that approval, and that's, that is in the planning, uh, commission's resolution approving, approving the application, and I guess what I'm trying to point out is that I don't think that can be done, and, um, just to further expand on it, when I, and maybe the traffic engineer can, can address the point, but when I looked at the traffic impact plan, it clearly shows the turning radius, uh, for traffic is going to go into the public right-of-way, and that will effectively occupy the public right-of-way without an encroachment permit, without the applicant having gone through an encroachment permit process, without the applicant even paying for an encroachment permit application or submitting an encroachment permit application, and will effectively be giving a public right-of-way for the use in this application, and I, I think it's a, it's an issue that really needs to be nailed down, uh, as we go through this.
So I have one clarification question, uh, Mr. Jacobs said that there are five parking spaces on the site, um, it's my understanding, and perhaps it's why it's de novo, now we're looking at five versus the four, uh, but I want to clarify one thing with staff, um, whether it's four or five, it's less than the ten that are required for this lot size, we do, my understanding is the town code does not include parking as, at bays as parking.
It's silent on whether you can count that, so ten spaces are required, and the planning commission decided to count the parking in the bays as meeting.
But officially, we're looking at five.
Yeah, if you were building, if you were building a new building there, this size, you would have to have ten onsite parking spaces per the code.
Thank you.
Are questions of the applicant's representative? Okay, you suffered that nicely, um, perhaps we would like to hear from your traffic engineer?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll obviously be here for any further questions.
Oh, yes, you will.
Uh, Daleen Whitlock is the traffic engineer for the project.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone in the back who'd like to move to the floor? Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members, my name is Daleen Whitlock, I'm a principal with W Trans in Santa Rosa, and we prepared the traffic study for this project, um, and looking back through my notes, it's, it's been a rather long process, we started about a year and a half ago, and, uh, for the benefit of the crowd, since I know you already know all this, the process includes us writing a scope of services, which then is approved at a council meeting, um, then we prepared the traffic study, and then we've gone through the planning commission, and now we are here to have the, the traffic study approved, it is act, was actually technically the only part that had to come to council if, if there had not been an appeal, so it's kind of an interesting process, I have to admit, I don't go through quite the same thing, thing anywhere else.
All right. Woo!
And I don't mean to interrupt, but just for clarification, that it, that what I've done is not considered an appeal, but a directed referral to bring it back to council.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Um, so, the traffic study, um, addressed, as, as Mr. Parisi noted, we were predominantly, uh, looking at off-site traffic impacts, in other words, the, how much traffic will this site generate, and how much will that change operation at adjacent intersections? We looked at intersections along Drake and along Broadway both, um, and in looking at these intersections and adding in the traffic that would be generated by the project, we found that it would be an imperceptible change, the average delay would be, you know, a few tenths to a second of difference, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything significant under your, your standards. Um, we also did look at the pedestrian connectivity and, and recommended the improvements to the sidewalks along Sir Francis Drake, um, at the time that the traffic study was prepared, there was not a connection through to Broadway, that was an issue that came up, um, out of later questioning, and so we didn't actually look at pedestrian connectivity on the south side of the site, uh, we also did look at, um, bicycle facilities and, and the fact that there is bicycle parking on the site, um, was, was seen to be a, a plus in terms of bicycle, of, you know, being able to serve bicyclists who might be coming in from the west part of the county. Uh, with that, I, rather than making any kind of a big presentation, I'd just like to be able to answer your questions.
I have a quick question for David, did you have a chance to review the traffic study?
Yes, uh, we reviewed the traffic study and asked for some additional analysis, for instance, the traffic study did not, or the site at that time did not recommend a driveway on Broadway off of Bank, um, which would have meant that westbound traffic on Sir Francis Drake, trying to access the site, would try to make a left turn where there's no left-turn lane, uh, so for instance, we recommended that left turns not be allowed because the delays would be pretty substantial, uh, for westbound traffic, in fact, cars trying to get around, left turners would possibly even go into the bike lane, uh, so we saw some potential, um, unsafe, uh, conditions, we thought it might be a good idea therefore to, you know, if, if that, if serving, uh, westbound traffic was desired, we requested, uh, the traffic engineer, W Trans, to look at the idea of a driveway off of Broadway at Bank, assess the intersection, uh, level of service, et cetera. We also requested, um, uh, some further analysis of the turning movements through the site for tanker trucks and for vehicles, how they would get into the site, uh, how they would make their maneuvers, uh, as well as the parking in front of the proposed convenience mark, because we had some concerns about the three spaces that were proposed straight on, how people would actually access those parking spaces, and egress, would they have to go across the sidewalk or onto Sir Francis Drake, um, those were, uh, some concerns, many of these things have been addressed, and we had some other issues too, so we did a very extensive review, um, and W Trans, um, made some revisions to their report.
At this time, do you have a recommendation or a review or an appraisal of the, uh, traffic report?
Well, I think, um, overall appraisal, it does meet all the considerations that, uh, that we gave to W Trans to take a look at, um, I think the traffic report is, um, is adequate, it does, I, I feel the report, um, pretty accurately estimates the amount of traffic that the site would generate, it's true that, um, gas stations and convenient marks that are associated with the gas stations, mostly attract traffic that's already on the street, that's already passing by, um, at least two-thirds of the traffic that would be accessing the site would be traffic that's already on the local streets, Sir Francis Drake, Broadway, et cetera, there would be some potential new traffic that would access the site, that traffic would be the one, the traffic that increases some of the delays at some of the local intersections, but those delays would be pretty minor. The issues from a traffic perspective, I think, are the ones that the council has already mentioned, which is onsite, circulation, uh, parking, and pedestrian and bicycle, uh, access in and around the site, so those are the, the areas we, you know, we've really been trying to focus on.
So they did a good job?
Yes, yeah.
Other questions from council? Barbara?
Um, so, I have several questions, um, in looking at your executive summary, you talk about over fifteen hundred net new trips on a daily basis, um, and, I guess from a, you know, a layperson, um, the Klaus-Broadway-Sir Francis Drake intersection is already quite fraught with traffic congestion, so to me, additional fifteen hundred trips or fifteen sixty-three net new trips, it doesn't sound acceptable, and, um, you know, I, I really question that, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I apologize to the traffic engineers in the room, but, uh, to me, I think we're, we're going to create excessive traffic in that area, coupled with the, uh, troubles with the ingress and egress, with people backing out onto Sir Francis Drake, I think we'll have more traffic accidents in that area, um, and I don't expect all these answers, I, I'd like maybe some further analysis to be done to bring more information back in January, but I, I have significant concerns about five parking spaces with barely any room on the site, and then, uh, people backing out onto Sir Francis Drake, potentially hitting pedestrians, bicyclists, other cars, and really just nodding up that whole area, so, that is, you know, really things that I, I'd like to hear back maybe more in January after there's been more analysis, and I understand that it looks like there will be a driveway on Broadway now, uh, but I, I don't feel comfortable at this point just saying that, you know, words like "the traffic load is already acceptable in those intersections," I know those intersections, and it's pretty tough to get through now, and with a- And with a pretty large convenience store that may also attract customers other than people seeking gas, I see a real problem there, or, you know, potential issue that I'd like to hear more about. Also, you know, I saw the plans of how the tankers would come in and out, and the recommendation that the tankers would do their deliveries during low-peak times. But given the limited ingress and egress on that site with just a few cars there, I don't see, you know, I'd like to hear more about how that can really work. So those are just a few of the things that I've been scratching my head about, thinking I'd really like to hear more about, you know, can we do some further analysis? Can we really look at the turning radius? I know Larry's brought up, without getting into the right-of-way. So that's a lot being thrown at you.
I'll see how much of it I can remember to answer at one time. As far as the, there are a couple of things that the site plan has changed since the traffic study was prepared. One of the things that changed was that, and I don't have a current copy of the site plan, but I believe that the parking spaces have been angled in front of the C store so that instead of backing directly out into Drake, they will now back onto the site.
But I think that's with a lesser number of parking spaces. The architect just said there were still five on the site.
Well, then I will let him answer that question, because I didn't design the parking spaces. But that was my understanding, is that that was one of the considerations, was to angle the parking spaces so that they didn't have to, so that customers didn't have to back out. The architect also is the one who prepared the truck turning diagrams. We were asked to include them in our traffic study, and we did. I think prior to the meeting in January, it's time for us to go back and look at those again. When I looked at them and when I was here at the Planning Commission, it looked to me like there would be a way of keeping the truck turns completely on the site and getting them out of that easement so that at such time as the town, you know, decided to make some other use of that easement, or if they decided to right now, the project would not be impacted, you know, in such a way that the trucks could no longer get on and off. The whole concept of trip generation and levels of service, and there are a bunch of buzzwords that we as traffic engineers kind of throw away, throw around without thinking too much about them. And I recognize that they're not necessarily concepts that are real easy to follow along with. And part of the reason that I find level of service a very frustrating concept for most policymakers is that it is based on an average over the course of an entire hour for everybody who's moving through an intersection. So if you happen to be on the movement that hits a green light and just goes right straight through every time, and you hardly ever wait, you're below average. The person that's above average is the one that's in here thinking that it's a terrible intersection. And that's not to say that it probably, that it couldn't be a terrible intersection. It just doesn't show up necessarily in the way the calculations are done in the theory. And again, it is over the course of an hour. So if you've got a really, really heavy 15 or 20-minute peak, and then things fall off substantially, you're averaging it out over the hour. And all that theory doesn't necessarily jive well with what you, you know, what you feel when you drive it. And so it is a difficult concept sometimes to try to explain why it is that when I sit there for 45 or 50 seconds, every time I come to this intersection, you're telling me the average delay is 24. I don't buy it. So for you, it's different. But for someone else, it might be 10 or 15 seconds. So, and that's kind of what happens with the levels of service. As far as the trip generation, one of the things that I always find interesting about gas stations in particular, not so much the C stores, but gas stations are seen as a huge traffic generator. But personally, I probably haven't left my house 10 times in five years to go get gas, just to go get gas. I mean, it's something you do on your way somewhere. So that's why, for the most part, these trips are passed by. The C store will attract some, you know, some primary trips, obviously customer, I mean, obviously, the employees are primary trips. They go there just to be there. But for the most part, people who buy gas are doing it on their way from one place to another. They might have to divert out of their way.
Can I just interject and ask you one question?
Mm-hmm.
It was my understanding that actually the number is something like 4,600, but if you extract those pass-bys, which is what you just mentioned.
Correct.
You're looking at 1,563 net new trips. So those are the people that left their house to go get gas. Is that correct?
It's also employees, it's deliveries.
But those are trips that aren't people, that are just passing by the area.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's, again, you know, based on the theory of where they've asked other questions, whether or not the pass-by rate, it's as much as 80% for some stores and less for others. You know, again, we're using average rates that are based on sites that were on all different kinds of roads. On Sir Francis Drake, it is, has such a heavy traffic volume, you know, for the most part, people do not get out there if they don't have to. If you can put it off till later or do it earlier, you're going to try to avoid those peak times. So, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at. But yes, you're right, that those 1,563, that is a number of net, estimated net new trips on average.
So can I just ask if the Broadway driveway that you're talking about, is that two-way?
We treated it as two-way, and we did, in response to Mr. Parisi's request, run a second set of analysis, which I believe ended up in the traffic study before it was finalized, that discusses the operation with that driveway. So people would come and turn left off of Sir Francis Drake at Klaus, and then ride on Broadway, and then ride into the driveway because they couldn't turn left from Sir Francis Drake.
But what I'm asking is, can, the people can exit and enter the gas station from?
We were assuming that it could go both directions. There were concerns stated at Planning Commission about that becoming a cut-through, if people could turn off of Sir Francis Drake and pass right in front of the C store and ride out the back.
And then can people exit the gas station on Broadway and turn left, crossing the yellow line? Or would it be a right turn only?
No, they could turn left off of, onto Broadway.
So I mean, I just ask a complete-
I mean, there's nothing out there that would prohibit it at this time.
Right. But, and it would be really hard for us to observe that. Isn't there a six-month sort of conditional piece on that, that we watch how it goes for six months? Is it something like that in the permitting? So?
There's a six-month review. The Planning Commission put a six-month review condition on it.
And then if there was a problem, then they would just put a curb back over where that driveway was, and then try and figure out what to do with Drake? Is that, I'm just trying to understand the process.
I think they would review it, and, you know, there's probably a number of options. The traffic engineers would look at how it's operating. They could either close it off, they could make it one-way, entry-only, exit-only, but that would be determined after they analyzed how it was operating for six months. That was the commission's intention, to see how it actually worked.
Okay. I'm just going to be unscientific completely for a minute here, and just, is there ever anything done anywhere that just has to do with, like, the people who use the streets, and the bikers, and the walkers, and the people who deal with Klaus all the time, and the waiting, and the long-stop light, and all the people that have issues about how come the lights aren't timed properly down Sir Francis Drake, that we had a chance for the people to see how things are circulating out there? In the process of a discussion like this, which is obviously going to add, you know, hopefully for the business's success, would add a great number of car trips. Is there any precedent for something like that? I know it's not, like, the normal process of doing traffic studies, but I would say that maybe a lot of people in this room are going, "You're kidding. Really? We're going to, how can we go to Klaus?" And I'm not, I'm just, I'm a person that uses the town a lot. So I'm just curious as to, is there some way that we could all take a look at that together to determine whether, you know, the movement and that's going to work for our town?
It's a fair question. It is very difficult because so much of what we deal with, well, I kind of liken, I'm a civil engineer by degree, but if I wanted to figure out how far a beam would deflect when you put something on the end of it, I could calculate that, and I'd get an exact answer. Traffic is not that way. It's almost as much of an art as it is of a science. We're trying to guess what's going to happen in the future based on what happened in the past, and we all know how that works to an extent. But, you know, I had someone ask me one time, "Well, if I go out and count, am I going to get that number?" And the answer is no. I have, maybe, you might get lucky, and we might have hit it right on the head, but I don't think it's going to happen that way. It's mostly a planning tool to see, to compare, you know, a theoretical to a theoretical. It's not necessarily that the operation is, you know, when I say it's at level of service, CD, whatever, that's not, and has an average delay of 45 seconds. It's not necessarily that you're going to go out there and measure it that way. What I'm trying to compare is if it's 45 seconds without the project, if I add the project trips, how much is it going to change? And that's what we're really trying to look at and give you as information. We're not trying to tell you, "Your intersections are wonderful, and, you know, you're all wet because you think they're terrible." That's not the point at all. It's more a comparative tool to see how much difference is there going to be because of the project. And so that's what we're trying to calculate, and that's the information we're trying to give you. There was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission about the operation of Sir Francis Drake, and why isn't it coordinated? And that's a darn good question, which, you know, perhaps the town of San Antonio needs to weigh in on that, and the county of Marin. But when you get, you know, jurisdictions that have adjacent signals, and especially the two that are so close right at your town borders, it makes it very tough when those signals are not coordinated, and the system is not working as one. But that's, you know, that's obviously a much bigger problem or project than, you know, this one development. But it is something that's very definitely an important aspect to your community, and something that maybe David can help you get some grant money to go after.
Mr. Mayor, one question. So just, the recommendation for no left turn going westbound off of Sir Francis Drake was an excellent recommendation for safety reasons. And now with the Broadway driveway, that will facilitate some things. But one of the things that I wonder if there's been analysis of, and maybe there should be some analysis of, is now that people will not be able to make that left turn, how much more traffic load is that going to add to people going down to the library, turning, than going up Broadway to get back to the station? I just, and I don't think you can answer that question tonight, and I don't expect an answer tonight, but I think that this is something that really should be looked at. How much traffic load are we going to be putting on those smaller streets for people trying to access the station? By, you know, leaving an open space there is an optimum, of course, but by having this additional traffic circling the block and going on these smaller streets, I really worry about safety for kids, for kids going to school, for, you know, people, pedestrians, and also just adding so much traffic to an area that really wasn't intended to have so much. So I wonder if that's something you all can put your heads together and look at and bring us more information back in January?
So you're talking about them bypass, going past Klaus, then realizing they can't turn left.
Yeah.
And continuing on, and then trying to loop back around?
Yeah.
Hopefully, folks wouldn't do that very often. I mean, the first time you did it, you'd realize that that wasn't-
Well, but also, there's the other aspect of now turning onto Klaus where, you know, we didn't see as many turns because, you know, people already knew about the scoop or whatever, and they didn't need to do that. But now they want to get to that station. So what I'm sort of asking is some analysis to be done on that load that will be taken, you know, that will happen, turning onto Klaus more, turning onto Broadway more, going by the library more. So I think that's something I, I think you could probably take a look at and come back to us in January with some better information. Because I don't think this is a good thing to really pose, you know, late in the game.
Yeah. I mean, we did look at traffic going down Klaus. If they couldn't go straight and turn left into the site, we did evaluate operation with them all turning left on Klaus and then right onto Broadway. So that, you know, we've taken, and that included the pass-by trips. So not only, you know, all those that were subtracted out, when they're pass-by trips, that means they turn directly into the driveway. We took all those pass-by trips and added those in as well. So we've actually taken a lot more traffic by diverting it around, a lot more movements than would occur if they were able to stay on Drake. So we have looked at the Klaus-Belinas, or Klaus-Broadway, excuse me, connection. We didn't look at what happens if they drove on by and then circled back, but, you know, we certainly could make some estimates as to how much traffic that would be.
Well, that would be great for January. Thank you.
Mayor, one of the things that I'm not sure that you're aware of dealing with this is that in the process of agreeing our general plan, we had a section of the general plan that dealt with the general downtown area. And the general plan advisory committee did a couple of public outreach sessions where they asked people what they visioned. We had some workshops in this room where we, you know, solicited comments from the public. And one of the ideas that came out of that was what to do with Belinas, which is another road that's kind of narrow, and there's too much, too many kind of things happening. And from the members of the public at that workshop, somebody were, some people were proposing, you know, making it one-way, or closing it to cars sometimes, or all the time, or eliminating parking on one side or the other, or, you know, all kinds of different options. And that was enough, enough time had elapsed since both of those workshop sessions that when the general plan came in front of the council, we didn't approve the downtown section and said, "We need to talk about this more," because it had been over five years since those series of workshops. So it kind of stirs the pot a little bit in terms of this process. I mean, because how many studies can you do of the hypothetical if you don't know what this community process is, what the outcome of it is going to be? So I guess it's not really a question as much as raising awareness of the fact that this is a fluid situation. I guess, do you have thoughts on that?
I was hoping you weren't going to ask.
I mean, circulation downtown and the various intersections are one of the things that comes up. I mean, the Klaus-Drake intersection used to be a four-way stop sign, which worked great for everything else in Fairfax. It worked, it was a lousy system for people trying to get through onto Sir Francis Drake, which is why we have a light there now, which means that people run the stop signs when the light's green. You know, it's kind of dysfunctional. I mean, that's one of the problems that, you know, people are looking, you know, it's a community-wide conversation of what we want to have downtown look like. And it seems like that's a big wild card here, and it really should be integrated with this process, in my feeling. Do you have thoughts on that?
Well, Fairfax has both some incredible challenges and some amazing opportunities. We worked on the plan for the Parkland, I'm trying to think what they called it.
The Parkade.
The Parkade, thank you.
Pedestrian improvement.
We worked on that a number of years ago, and there were some, you know, there's a lot of space there, and there's a lot of connectivity there, and there's a lot of opportunities there. There's also some grade differentials and some ADA compliance problems. And, I mean, we had, we had all the way from the really good to the really bad, all in that one little space of, you know, two blocks by a half a block wide. And, you know, that's just one of the many things that you have going in your downtown that you've got to deal with. You've got offset intersections, you've got the county's largest arterial right through the middle. You know, so you've got all these, all these different things that have to be dealt with. But it, you know, it's not something that you can do piecemeal, and I think that you were wise to kind of back up on the process and say, you know, "Let's put it all together and look at it all at once," because there really are so many more opportunities when you can look at it from a global perspective, and then home in on the, on the pieces, as opposed to starting from the little pieces and working out. You've already kind of shot yourself in the foot when you start too narrow. But, you know, as far as where you can go, I think there's a lot of things you can do. Some of them are just going to take a lot more political will than others.
Any other questions for the traffic engineer?
Just to follow up on the turning radius, I'm not sure if I heard your description of turning radiuses, or even if that's part of your domain.
You're talking about the truck turns?
Yes.
The diagram was actually prepared by the architect, but when we were looking at it during the Planning Commission meeting, it appears that by changing the way the truck enters, it can be, I think it can, there's a way of maneuvering a truck through the site without going into the easement, and we- a truck through the site without going into the easement. And we just need to prepare that and provide it for you at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah. I'm, we're definitely going to want to see, see that on paper. And the other thing that I was comparing a plat map, which I assume is from the county, with the plans. And it, I'm not sure, the Bank Street extension that's shown on the plans is shown as a dotted line. And it looks narrower than the actual right-of-way. And that's something I'm really interested in getting really good information on, not just the extension of the roadway, but the actual dimensions of the right-of-way as it passes through the property. I don't know, for example, if the sidewalks adjacent to Bank Street south of the site are in the public right-of-way or not. Because that obviously would add, you know, six to eight feet of right-of-way, which is going to change the impact on, on this application. So I think that's something I really, the council's really going to need before we can make a decision. And just following up on John's comment about the general plan, the, the ordinance for the traffic impact permit actually says that the intent of, of the chapter is to meet the goals and objectives of the community. And that's what you were talking about, about taking sort of a global look at it and not piecemeal. And I think that's what's articulated in the general plan. And there, there was a lot of discussion about this particular intersection and about reconfiguring Bank Street to go through there, extending the parkade, creating a park in that space. And that doesn't seem to have really been addressed. And I think it's something that we're going to need to really consider as we go forward. And I, and I don't want to put it all on your plate, but as we consider the traffic impact permit, I think we do need to keep the, the long-term goals in, in mind as, as we move forward. So that's all I've got at the moment. Thank you.
Any other questions of the parking consultant?
Just one quick clarification. I just want to make sure that when we come back in January, that in addition to doing the analysis we've discussed, that you are going to be looking at how with five parking spaces or four parking spaces, there will be ingress and egress out of the site by, will people be backing out on Sir Francis Drake? So I just want to make sure that that gets covered as well.
Got it.
Okay. With that, do you want to suggest who next from your team will be speaking?
Mayor and Town Council, my name is Steve Sabahi. I am a real estate agent.
Please speak, sir.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Steve Sabahi. I'm a real estate agent. I'm actually the one who sold the property to the applicant. In addition to selling gas station properties, I've spent the last close to thirty years involved in the gasoline business. I am very familiar with the operations of both branded gas stations and unbranded gas stations. What I wanted to do is address to you the, the competitive nature of both the unbranded market and the branded market. And when I look at this marketplace with the, the two stations that are currently operating and the one that's closed, you're looking at a market that has potentially three hundred thousand gallons of fuel per month that would go through these types of gas stations. That looks like...
Stop that. We have a civility section here, and if necessary, I'll read it out again. John read it earlier tonight. We show respect both ways. Please.
Okay. When you look at that type of volume, what's being currently sold at the two locations that are in operation, and the reason I know that is because I monitor gas stations that come onto the market. Both of these gas stations have been on the market on and off for the last two years. So the current volume for those two stations right now is approximately a hundred thousand gallons. So it's doing one-third of what it potentially could be doing. So therefore, it's only generating a third of the potential tax revenue that would be generated for the city. When you look at that, the potential tax revenue for that, based upon the one percent that the city gets, in addition to the half a cent that they get, I believe through Measure D, you're looking at a potential, right now, a potential shortfall of anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per month that it's not getting. And that's the next, that's close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an annual basis. By virtue of adding another station or reopening this other station, you would actually create a more competitive marketplace. Therefore, everybody would benefit. In addition to, there would be more tax revenue being generated for the city through the, just through the sales tax and through Measure D, which benefits the city. I'm knowledgeable as far as these processes, because if you look at the spot market, it's very volatile, okay? And it, the price of crude fluctuates and it influences the price of gasoline. And by virtue of that, the independent market has changed significantly over the last ten years. You have a situation where unless you have the ability to affiliate yourself with a brand, you're now subject to wild fluctuations in the market. And therefore, you don't have the same ability to do the same volume unless you're an aggressive business operator and therefore be willing to work on thinner margins and therefore less profitable. So what happens is oftentimes, people who have, are subject to buying on that type of marketplace, what they will do is they will work on much higher margins, okay? Therefore, sell less fuel, okay? But try to make about the same money. But what that does is that impacts a city such as Fairfax or a town such as Fairfax that really needs those tax dollars. So, excuse me, based upon what this particular, if this station is reopened, it potentially can generate upwards of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per month in itself just on gasoline. This has nothing to do with the convenience store, which would be an additional three to five thousand dollars a month. So it's significant money that would go right into the coffers of the town. You know, people are very upset because they think Chevron is an evil empire. They all have issues. Oil companies have issues. People don't like them. But in reality, and that's another point I want to make, is, is that if you buy gasoline, you're buying gasoline from the major oil companies. You're buying it from ConocoPhillips, you're buying it from Valero, you're buying it from BP, you're buying it from Chevron, you're buying it from Shell. I have two bills of lading, okay, that show that product, independent product, was purchased at the Shell, or the Chevron refinery in Richmond and delivered to, it's unbranded product, okay? So what happens if he's able to affiliate himself with Chevron, he has the ability to eliminate some of the fluctuations in the market because he has a, a direct association with them. It's, it's, he is, has a contract that he can only buy from them. So therefore, he's not subject to the whims of the market and therefore he can provide more competitive pricing to the marketplace. You're more than welcome to have these and you can review them yourself if you like. Let's see. You know, another, another issue is, is that when you look at independent gasoline as a whole, again, it's coming out of the same refinery. But the only difference between what comes out as Chevron-grade gasoline, Shell-grade gasoline, or independent-grade gasoline is the amount of additive that's added at the rack at the time it's loaded in the truck, okay? So instead of fifteen parts that is added to a Chevron-grade gasoline, twelve parts of independent additive is added. That gasoline is less productive and potentially creates more pollution. But that's, that, you know, I, I don't have the, the, I do know that there's a difference in the amount of additive that's added. I do not have the amount of pollutant that would be emitted based on that. But I do know that it is different in that regard. I am open to any questions you may have. But I do, I do believe that right now you have an eyesore that's sitting at two thousand one Sir Francis Drake. And if the applicant is approved, I think that he is going to create something that is a benefit to the community and it will benefit the town of Fairfax and the amount of revenue that's generated for the town.
Let's have some questions. John? Okay, Barbara? Wow. Renee?
Just for clarification, I'm not sure I understand when you said this is an unbranded product that our independents are, are carrying. And that it, I understand the additive, who adds the additive, the twelve parts or the fifteen parts?
So what happens is, is that trucking, that you have, basically you have major brands that sell the gasoline through their chains. And then you have independent jobbers or independent brokers, for that matter, that purchase fuel from a number of different refineries, okay? The firm that I used to work for sold gasoline in and around the state. I sold gasoline as far north as Santa Rosa and as far south as San Luis Obispo. And what we did was, is we would buy it from companies such as Valero, ConocoPhillips, or Tesoro for that matter. And what they would do is they would buy the fuel from Chevron. They would have exchange agreements with Chevron. The product would come out of Chevron, but it would be branded, it would be unbranded. It would not be branded fuel. Fuel comes out of the same refinery. It comes out of the same pipe. It's gasoline. Gasoline is gasoline in the sense that it gets refined, it has to meet a specific specification, for lack of a better term, that it will combust in your engine. So what brands it as branded fuel is the additive that's put into the gasoline right then as it's added into the truck before it's delivered to the location. Ethanol is a product that's used to, to, as an oxygen in, in an attempt to, I have issues with ethanol, but that's beside the point.
All right. Let's bring it back. Laura?
I didn't get your last name.
Sabahi.
Sabahi. What I'm wondering as far as the revenue figures that you're throwing out, if you put in a, a gas station, branded gas station, won't that detract from the sale of gasoline at the other stations? And in effect, what you may gain at one station, you may lose at the other stations. So how, how do you, how do you account for that process? How do you account for that relationship?
When I, when I look at this, I look at the number of gallons that are being, being sold in the area. And I look at the, the pricing that is being posted on the street currently. And the difference between what I see in Fairfax and what I see in San on Salmo is about anywhere from twenty-five to thirty cents a ton. All of your revenue is being, is going to other cities by virtue that it's not being purchased here in Fairfax.
Okay. Well, you know, I actually went by the North Bay yesterday and looked at their prices. And I actually have a picture of it on my phone, which is, needs to be charged. But I'll email the, the picture into the record tomorrow when it's charged. So you can take a look at it.
How much was it? Do you remember?
It was around three fifty-five. And then I looked at the Extra Mile on D Street. It was three seventy-five. So the Chevron, the Chevron, the Chevron, the branded station was selling gas at a higher price than was available here in Fairfax at North Bay. So I, I'm just...
But that's a market condition.
Well, I, but you...
You can see a market, you can see a market condition in San Francisco. It's going to be higher than it is going to be in Marin, okay? You're going to see independent fuel because the independent price that I saw at the gas and shop on Sir Francis Drake was three thirty-five when I drove by today.
Okay. My point is, if you compare the prices yesterday that were available in Fairfax, they were less than the price at the branded station, the Extra Mile station on D Street in San Rafael. So my point is, I'm just trying to respond and reflect back to you the date, some of the figures that you're providing as facts and pointing out that my observation, the evidence out there is, in fact, that the gas that's being sold here currently by, by the independents is at a lower price than is available at the Extra Mile in San Rafael. That's, I'm just reflecting that back to you.
Okay. I'll defer, Mr. Sullivan. Do you have any other questions for me? Or I can stand by and wait for you as well.
Well, let's, let's hear from the applicant.
Good evening, councilmembers. I just want to answer this one particular question. And then I'll, and then I'll come back and answer everyone, all the other questions in detail. What attracted me to this site is, yes, that particular gas station has lowered its price. But I've been living in Marin, San Rafael, and Terre Linda for thirty years. Now I currently reside in Novato. For thirty years, I, I basically grew up my whole, majority of my life in Marin County, San Rafael, Terre Linda. Now I reside in Novato.
And you're...
Excuse me. Okay. So like I was mentioning, for thirty years, I've been living in Marin County, mostly in San Rafael and Terre Linda. What attracted me to this site, and I'll go back to a little of my history, is that I coached at San Dominic School. My brother attended there and I was a coach there for eight years. And some of my, hopefully, some of my basketball former players are here. Saying, saying that, what attracted me was, yes, that price has dropped. His pricing has changed. But I could tell you, it changed recently, in the last couple of weeks. I am a business person. I'm not coming here to throw money against the wall and not have a rate of return. The pricing here has been, on average, thirty cents higher. That's what appeals me to this location. What appeals me to this town is because I see people leaving this town to other cities buying their gasoline. You mentioned, with, with this particular site going in, would you lose volume? Independent gas stations and branded gas stations are two different customer, customer base. People who go to independent gas stations are really going for price, 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 and price. People who go to branded, it, it doesn't have to be gas stations. It could be clothing stores. People go in there to what they're expected and what they know they're going to get. For, for my, for my sake, the branded location that I, that I'm hoping to do, bring is, is going to bring new customers that are leaving this town. So when I saw this site that was available two years ago, and I was seeing the prices, what really, I don't want to be disrespectful, but they're gouging the, the residents of Fairfax by charging us high kind of margins. Now, now that I put my application in, their pricing philosophy has changed. But please bear in mind that this site's been on the market. I had an opportunity to acquire it, but I wasn't interested in it. And just to give you a little background, I have heard from Chevron that if my application gets denied, the station that is across from me is requesting to go Chevron. So this, this tells you the market is changing. If, I own gas stations throughout Marin County. If you were to talk to me ten years ago, all my sites were independent. I didn't want to deal with an old company because if it's an independent site, I'm my own boss. I don't report to anybody. Now, unfortunately, the market condition has changed. I had no choice to be competitive to what, for pricing and for volume-wise. I had to start branding my location. So when, when you ask, is there a difference between independent customers and Chevron customers, it's, well, you go into an independent site for the pricing. If I build the Chevron station, for example, it'll be ludicrous for the competition to be higher than my price. They have to reduce their price. That's, that's going to increase their volume. It's going to attract other independent sites that are going to San on Salmo. It's going to increase volume to this town, which is going to generate more sales tax. And the people that are leaving town to go to San Rafael or Greenbrier, I have a station in San Rafael. So I might be cannibizing some of my sales. But people are leaving this town to buy fuel in others, in other cities. That's just, it's just a fact. Chevron or any other old company, or even myself, I'm not interested in building a gas station that has, going to have no customers coming in. So, but I know there's potential. We know there's volume that is being left town. And this is the reason why... this is the reason why I'm eager and I'm very excited to have this opportunity to brand this particular location in, in your town. So I just want to answer that question regarding pricing wise.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for me?
I was curious, because I wouldn't buy gas in this town because it is too expensive. So I go to the one at the hub. And I've been terribly curious why, I think you said it was about 25 or 30 cents cheaper, at least. How do they do that?
How do they do what?
How do they sell that product so much cheaper than any place else?
Well, a lot of it's, it's a business decision. Some people would rather sell less fuel at a higher margin. And they're, become more or less complacent to where the, the way they operate their business. Other people are more aggressive in the manner that the way they price their fuel. They would like to do higher volume all the time, because they feel like it generates more for alternative profit centers. It drives a store, it drives a car wash, it drives other profit centers.
Let me ask you a question. Why, if we approve this thing, and it's a year down the road, and everything was equal, why wouldn't he charge 350 a gallon? And then the one at North Bay would, you know, drop this to three cents, and the one from across the street, the Rhino, would come down 20 cents. But we'd still, would be not getting the same break as folks at the hub who are paying 335, all things being equal.
Well, the market conditions are gonna drive somebody's pricing policies. In addition to that, if he's not competitive, then he's not gonna generate the volume that he's looking for. So chances are, he's gonna be more competitive, which enables, again, which I, which was the premise of what I came up here to, to discuss. If you've got three stations and you've got three people, three different businesses vying for more business, in addition to bringing a different type of customer to the marketplace, you're now generating more tax dollars.
Okay. I, I just gotta tell you, based on the gray hairs on my head, it is astounding, no matter where I go in America, that no matter how many times you get to a corner with two or three gas stations, gosh, they're all within a penny of one another, if not exactly the same.
You're absolutely correct.
You're absolutely correct about that. But, by me coming into this town, I'm gonna bring competition to this town. I am not, I am not interested in spending money and not get a rate of return. So, my business philosophy in all my sites is volume. Now, I'm not gonna give away the gas for free, I, I'm a, I'm a, not a, I'm a, I'm a, I am a, not a nonprofit, I, I'm looking to turn, turn a dollar here. But I can't go in there and charge 379 or 389 currently, one of the sites that's charging, work on 50, 60 cents outrageous margins, but have absolutely no volume. And the people are going to San Anselmo, going to San Rafael, going to Green Bay. So my Chevron site, at this particular, if this gets approved, I will be very competitive with the Chevrons in, in the area. The D Street San Rafael that you mentioned, that is not my location, and that is a low volume site, and they operate the same similar way to the town of Fairfax, because they're competing across from our Arco Station, and they can't compete. So, I know you mentioned that D Street, but if you come down a little bit further, towards my side, my side's pretty one of the competitive areas in San Rafael and, and in North Bay. So, the goal is, is you've got to balance between margin and volume. You can't charge too high, because then you're not gonna have the customers come in, and they're not gonna come into your store. But you also can't give away the house and not make any margins. So it's, it's a, it's a correlation of, of two. But what I'm seeing in Fairfax, what's, what's appealing me to Fairfax is that these two sites are, historically has been charging, and, and, and that's their right, they, they can charge whatever they like, and this is, you know, a competition and, and, and their faith. But that is not my business philosophy, and if you, if I, if you allow me to come in here, this will be more competitive, and I, pretty much everyone will be on their toes and being more honest, I guess. So I'll just leave it at that.
We've, unless there's any other questions on gas station operation. John?
Yeah, I'll bite on this. And Fairfax is kind of a unique place, and we have people who think about gas and where it comes from and what their behavior does in the world.
Absolutely.
And, and being a business person, I, I thought I'd advance this idea towards you. People buy plane tickets, uses a lot of fuel, and they have a certain amount of guilt that goes along with that. And they say, well, I'm, you know, I need to fly to wherever it is they need to fly to. And so they'll go online and buy carbon credits to offset the damage that they are doing with that fuel, or by burning that fuel. And, to your knowledge, is there gas stations that sell carbon credits?
I'm not aware of that, but the one thing that I'm proposing is gonna be pretty much the first station in Marin County by offering it. I'm, I have spoken with Chevron, and like I said, I'll go more in detail about the whole signage and colors in detail. But I'll be the first station to really be having solar, solar panels, electric charging station. I have spoken with Chevron about putting hydrogen in the, in the site, so they are giving me a lot of leeway and latitude, because, please bear in mind, this is a, you know, major oil company. They want their red, white, and blue, the rate of trademark. But they're working with me, and I told them that I want to work with the town also, and I'm, I'm trying to do everything I can to kind of meet, kind of both ways, trying to get Chevron, trying to get the town to kind of come together. So, if you currently look at all the stations in the Bay Area, well, I don't wanna say Bay Area, but Marin County, I can't find a station what I'm trying to provide with, you know, really the green that I'm trying to, the, the green station that I'm trying to, trying to, trying to build out here. And people are laughing, and I understand, they, they're not happy, but I believe from 1937, this has been existing gas station. Is it 50, I, I've read somewhere on the IJ, this said 37, so if it's 51, my apologies. And the only reason this site closed down was the previous owner passed away, it went to foreclosure. If it wasn't that, this whole, it won't be, it wouldn't have been abandoned, closed gas station. It was an unfortunate situation for, for the previous owner. And, not to go into, top to other topics, but the, the, the truck and trailer, where the fuel brings, the tank trailers, we talked about a minute ago, the tanks are in the same position. So for 60 years, this gas station was operated the same way. So it'll still make the same radius, something that I kind of want to kind of bring out, because the tanks are in the same location area. So if it worked for 60 years in this town, and in those 60 years, it used to be a Chevron for majority of the time, there was always three sites here. It, it, it didn't impact or put anyone out of business. And, like I said, my goal is to really clean the site up, and there's opportunity, and I know there's a lot of people that are very unhappy with, with my application, trying to open this thing up. But I assure you, once I provide a, a good product with a competitive price, clean, these people that are against me will be my best customers. It's adamant. I seen it in another town in Mill Valley, it was at the same kind of situation. But it's all really based on your checkbook and your pocketbook. So, currently this, currently this town is not supporting, is not, excuse me, this town currently, the residents and then traffic are, are not pumping at these gas stations. They're going somewhere else. I mean, it's, that's a fact. And, and that's something that I just want to make sure that everyone understands.
Yeah, and, and that is a classic view of people either, you know, doing a brand loyalty thing, and they, they want to take care of their car, and so they're putting brand name gasoline in it, or they're going for the price point and buying the cheapest gas they can find. And those are the two classic ways of looking at it. And basically what I'm bringing up is that you have, in Fairfax, a concentration of somebody who is not served. And there are people who are thinking, ah, I really, you know, they're combining trips, they're trying to use as little gas as possible, but our country is built on the use of fossil fuels to a large extent. So they have to buy some.
Exactly.
They're also buying carbon credits for airline trips. So you could sell carbon credits there and probably increase your customer base. And I can also advance another different idea, which I have talked about in this council before, which is, if there are a lot of costs to using gasoline that are not paid at the pump, 10% of our healthcare costs, emergency rooms for our auto accidents, that we are paying for in other ways through our healthcare costs, but it's not rolled into the cost of gas. When you start including things like climate change, and there's no way to really quantify what that is. I mean, you could add in, you know, obesity from sitting in cars instead of riding a bike, and it's, it's really subjective. You can't really put a, a level on it. You could start including the cost of wars for oil, and then it's, it's another wild card. But if you picked a number of what the real cost, and there's people that try to do this, and I don't know how you can accurately do it, but I've heard the figure of $18 a gallon is the real cost of gas that we are paying in different ways, but not at the pump. Okay? So if you establish, if Fairfax, for instance, established a fund that people could voluntarily pay the real cost of gas, and you could advertise it right there on your sign, I don't know how many people would buy it, but some people would buy a little bit at that rate if they knew that the money was going to a fund that paid for alternative transportation, whether it was bicycle lanes, whether it was ride sharing, whether it was infrastructure to support various different things, or, or electric car charging stations, or whatever it was, you'd obviously have some, have to have oversight and determine that it went that right way. But it would make a statement.
Oh, absolutely.
And, and I think that your customer base, you would be, you know, in the, kind of in the forefront of, of a new way of selling gasoline, if you will, which would probably be interesting. I mean, do you think that Chevron would even allow you to do that?
You know, they, they've been pretty cooperative with me. So, I mean, anything that I can to work with the town, and of course, like I said, this is a very niche market. So anything that I could to, to get the town, or the residents, or the people to buy, of course, I would definitely look into it. And also, not to interject here, but also the, the money that is leaving the town, if it stays in town, I mean, I don't know if there's a way the town could put the pool, and to look at other alternative fuels. I, I am not Chevron. That's something that I want to make sure the people understand. I am a franchisee of Chevron, using their trade name.
Can I, can I actually inject on that, because your representative sort of mentioned this before?
Yes.
Of course, we haven't heard from the public, and we look forward to hearing specifically, yeah, I know, I know. But the question is, the signage. Can you speak to whether your franchise agreement specifically mandates this?
Sure. You know, and actually, now that I'm here, let's just talk about everything in general, and I'll have my, yeah, let's see. So Chevron's policy is, or their rules is, I have to ask for everything. Their standard image. Go, when we, I think we submitted our application to the planning department, you know, we put in the red, white, blue, the Chevron colors, because that's the obligation that I have with them, is that because if you don't, you have to try first. So, I knew, and they knew, but I, it's a process that I had to go through. Chevron understands that those colors will not be accepted. They have worked with me very intensely, reducing their signage. Regarding the canopy, I, Planning Commission wanted to know if we could put white and, or cafe au lait color, and I got Chevron approval on that. So, if, if they can't get their standard blue, or white, or red, they gave me some other alternative colors. If you ask me, can you go back and ask them for green? Well, you know, it, it, it's gonna have a conflict of interest with another oil company. So, so they have worked with me to reduce the signage dramatically. I have also asked them, you know, if the council, the, if they, if they want me to go from the white to cafe au lait, would you be okay with that? They said that's fine with them. There's a lot of leeway on, on signage to a certain degree. I also asked them if we take the Chevron signs logos off the canopy, just have it just regular white, or cafe au lait, whatever the, the council might prefer. They have also given me a okay, thumbs up for me to go ahead and take the signs down. So basically, the only signage that will get on the, on the gas station will be just the monument sign, which by law, it's gotta be on there, because you're pricing your fuel, and you gotta have the name of the brand. So they have come down dramatically on their signage.
Where are they on the easy mile sign?
The extra mile sign? On the building, I guess, maybe Linda could maybe address this, but I know the town did not want illuminated signs. So we did take the illuminated signs off. There's, actually, there's no light on the extra mile signs, nor on the monument sign. We have, I guess on the monument sign, we're proposing a spotlights to kind of angle it. On the extra mile signs, I think we have reduced it to the smaller sign. If you're asking to get that thing removed, I'm pretty sure I could, I could kind of force them to not have an extra mile building sign on there. So if we eliminate that, you'll basically just have one Chevron sign. I mean, I think even the pictures that are in Half Moon Bay, or Danville, or Mill Valley that are muted, I think this will be the really, really muted version of a Chevron just having one sign. So they are, they are, they are working with me, they are, they understand that there's a, there's a process with, with Fairfax, it's not just a submit back and forth. So, so they are working with me. So, so yeah, that, that is a, an option, if you, if you like, those, those signs to be removed.
So I have a, I looked a little bit online at the Chevron site to look at franchises, and it looks like to me, extra mile can be a separate franchise. And I'd like more information on the possibility of potentially separating the extra mile and not having the convenience store, and just allowing the gas station. I also saw, and this was just looking online.
Sure.
So, this is probably information you could give back to us.
No, I could give it to you right now.
But the other thing is, I noticed that they have kind of three size variations of extra miles. So, this one seems quite large to me, and I know when we had another convenience store in town, the 7-Eleven, which was the subject of three planning commission meetings and two council meetings, and it was a different issue, but there was a lot about, you know, what kind of the size. And additionally, the North Bay Gas came to the Planning Commission to have a very tiny retail store. And we spent a lot of time on really limiting what could be sold in that store, very, very small. It's really a kiosk, nothing else. So I'm wondering if maybe you could bring back to us the possibility of maybe removing the extra mile store, and limiting it to something like a gas station, or an alternative might be a very, a smaller version? So we could have more parking on the site, we could have more access, more turning radius, those kinds of things.
Sure. One thing I could comment, the convenience store with the extra mile with Chevron is a package with Chevron. So, it's really, for Chevron to brand this particular location, they won't have the convenience store, and so do, and so do I. The convenience store, the sellable square footage, where you see gondolas, or walking cooler, or cashier, Iran, you might be able to interject better, I think it's about 1,000 square feet, is that my understanding? So, the actually, this is not including the restrooms, the bathrooms, and the etcetera. So it is, I don't want to say considerably small, but it is a mid-sized store.
I think my, my house is, is less than 1,000 square feet, and I consider it kind of large.
Well, correct, but you have to understand, council member, I, I'm serving the public. So, maybe, maybe 1,000 square feet, your home is, but for a public commercial area, for 1,000 square feet, it's actually pretty, for, for our standard, it's pretty small. So I'm working with very limited conditions here, and I'm trying to use the, the best usage of, of the property, and really get the, the, the maximum square foot as I can. Regarding, I think, I'm not sure, Ms. Gooder, I, first of all, I, I had a presentation, one thing I want to mention to you is that I appreciate your, your first statement that you made, so I'm sort of grateful of you mentioning that statement. So, saying that, you mentioned about extra mile, or what, what I can sell and sell not. So the leeway I have with Chevron is, I can sell whatever I want. So, if, for example, if I put in stuff that sells in, let's just say San Francisco, but that's a different market than San Francisco. that's a different market than San Francisco and Fairfax. So I have to be able to sell items that's gonna be sellable, and have basically turnover. I'm not gonna put in stuff that are not gonna sell on Fairfax. So I do have leeway of what I could put in my store. If it's organic food, or any kind of snacks, I have that leeway. So it's not just, here's the oil company way, orash, take it or leave it. So the part of the store, and I think you also mentioned about pricing here, that's all controlled by me. Nobody tells me, orash, price your gas, this, or price your snack at this price. I have full control of my business. That was a question that you had, and what you could sell inside the store, I believe.
Do you plan on selling cigarettes, Deb?
Yes. And I believe cigarettes will be sold at the other two, at the other two, other two gas stations in town.
No, they're not good for people.
I'm sorry?
They're not good for people.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, there's so much background.
They're bad for public health.
And what about the alcohol part?
I am requesting for an ABC license, yes. Just like the 7-Eleven down the street has, and the other convenience stores in town.
And...
Yes.
And what about Councilmember Bragman's question earlier about the franchise within the franchise, the Starbucks, for example?
Well, there's no Starbucks being sold at extra mile. It's a coffee named Seattle's Best, but I have the option of which one I would like to pick. So it's, like I said, it's basically...
So you have the option of not including Seattle's Best, or some sort of branding?
I could have an organic coffee, or a different kind. That will be basically up to my choice of liking, of what I would like to sell. So if I, people are not branded products they don't like, well, I'm not gonna put it in there for have to just sit there. So I will change it to the, to the demand of, okay, of the town.
I take the woman's point. I understand, but this is our, you should understand that this is our first opportunity as a council and a community, to hear the applicant's full presentation with all of his experts here today. So I know that it is crunching your time, but remember, we're not going to close the public hearing. So we will be bringing this back again in January, or as sufficient, in order to make sure that the entire community has the opportunity to speak. I've noticed, of course, that we've probably lost a third of the audience, and they should have the opportunity to speak as well. So if we cannot accommodate in January, we will continue down that road to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to address the issue. So, okay?
So if that's true, then why not have some public hearing now, and then have some...
Because we want to hear the applicant's full panoply of presentation, because they are going to be getting into conversation with staff to address the many, many issues that we have raised here, and staff has raised here, and then going forward, that you will help us raise as well. But during the, between now and the time that we all meet again in January, they will be asking specific questions. We wanted to raise them here tonight and begin that conversation. I hope that's, that's the basis for it. Do you have...
I have a statement that I'd like to make, that I was trying, but we got into the Q&amp;As. I've been working with the planning department in the town of Fairfax for almost nearly two years. I have met all their conditions. There was numerous traffic study, after traffic study, and other adjectives that the town has requested that I have fulfilled. I have incurred enormous amount of fees getting this far. I pulled the, we pulled the excavation permit to clean the contamination site that was done, I don't know, in the mid-eighties, to clean that site. So that, based on the assumption that I was gonna reopen this service station up. So please, like I said, I have pretty much fulfilled everything the planning department has required me, and I'm here to cooperate. I'm not here to be the person that everybody wants to shoot down. I'm here to cooperate in any way. The driveway opening was not my recommendation. The town came to me and said, would you be, would you be interested in opening the driveway of Banks or Broadway? And I said, absolutely. So I'm here in every way to cooperate with the town and the residents. I know there was a Facebook webpage, I was on it. I tried to communicate, but it seemed like it wasn't going anywhere. I even asked that I would be glad to sit down with any of the council members, or even the people, residents, to sit down and talk to me about, you know, what I want to cooperate. I think I also met with the Chamber of Commerce to really, being in town, I know one of the comments was, would you have Chevron uniforms, so your employees wear Chevron uniforms? I even said, I even got Chevron to waive their waivers, will take their logos off, and just put, you know, regular khakis, or without. So I am doing everything that I can to, to a certain degree, to, like I said, not to be redundant, to fulfill Chevron's requirements, and also meet the town's requirements, and try to come, make a marriage in between. So if there's any further questions.
There are a number of questions that you were regarding the contamination.
Please.
In order that we can get to the public comment...
Sure.
I would prefer that we get these questions responded to in January.
Sure.
And the first would be, so we can provide these to you subsequently, because I realize you can't take notes. So when will the cleanup project be completed with Regional Water Quality Control Board approval? Provide more detail on the cleanup that was done, what was conducted to date, and what remains to be done. Will there be monitoring of groundwater on-site for a number of years? And I would expect so. And please include documentation to support the information. How can the town be assured that all necessary cleanup has been conducted? It also looks like the cleanup costs, and you should know that I have significant experience in cleaning up sites, I did that for something like twenty-two years.
Sure.
So it looks like the cleanup costs are roughly about a million and a half, with more than about a half a million paid from the LUST fund, and it looks like there's commitment letters to pay the remainder. So we'd like more information on, you know, what you're expecting as far as getting these costs reimbursed. And a lot of that information is online, but we'd need more information as to, you know, specifics on that. And what steps are being taken to ensure that there will not be additional contamination by the gasoline or diesel tanks? And in addition, what measures would be taken to minimize or eliminate the release of vapors during gas pumping? And the proximity to restaurants and the scoop, kind of make this a particular concern, of course, with pedestrian traffic. So rather than trying to answer those, I'd really prefer that we get that information to us, probably before the January meeting, obviously.
Sure. And I have majority of those answers, but yeah, we'll definitely give it to the staff.
And I would like that we would have documentation with that, so that we really feel comfortable with that information. So thank you very much.
Sure. And if I could have, is there any questions that I could answer? Because I do have one more person.
Renee, go ahead. You have another person?
Yes. So we try to come well-prepared, and like I said, I have gone to many Planning Commission hearings, council, so these are my, so, Ash, you know what?
Okay, Renee.
Let me...
I was gonna say something, I overbought after the...
Yes, I...
So, yeah, actually, this is just to put this out to staff, because I know that this, the first thing that was stated in the staff report was that this was categorically exempt from CEQA. And that hasn't come up in the conversation at all. So I would really, I would really like to ask that staff explore that, and come back to council to explain how it is that it's categorically exempt, and what, who, how is that determined, so that we can go forward. Knowing just the little I know about CEQA, I would say that every project that seems to, you know, have a heater inside of it, seems to be, seems to have to comply with some kind of a CEQA analysis. So I was, I was interested, and very curious that this didn't, and was just written as a categorical exemption. So it would be great for us all to know more about CEQA in this situation.
Sure. I don't have an answer.
We'll look for it back in January.
You guys come back with that, yeah.
One thing I could just mention to Councilmember Cooler, now regarding the site, it was overexcavated. It was done by the Water Resource Board monitoring it, there are government agencies. I know the planning department also got involved with some permitings and here and there, but the state oversees the recommendation of what they want to do, and we did overexcavate a majority of the site, and we're fulfilling everything of the state's requirements. So I'm doing everything I can to follow City of California's rules and regulations. So, sure.
Okay. Now, before we go to the public hearing, bear with me for ten minutes, not, I mean, ten seconds. I have a requirement under our, probably our code and our practice, that we have to review the agenda at ten. Can the council agree with me that we will push off everything except eighteen and nineteen, the building and fire code stuff, even if we're here in the late hour? And we'll get everything done at another time? Can I get a motion on that?
Yep.
So moved.
All right. You got that? Michelle, you got that? We got a motion to push off everything but eighteen and nineteen. Reed Kohler.
So you mean twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three?
And ten.
And ten.
Twenty's been pulled.
Yeah, I already said, yeah, I didn't, that's why I didn't include it. Yeah, okay. That's four things, four items.
Yeah, okay? We're good. All right.
So you, who made the motion?
I did.
Reed Kohler.
We both did.
Doesn't matter. Okay. Thank you. First of all...
We're gonna vote on that?
We voted.
We did?
Yeah. Okay, we vote? We should vote. All in favor of the decision to amend the agenda at the ten o'clock hour?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor. Okay. First of all, thank you all for your incredible patience, but I'm sure you will agree, hearing the long conversation between the council, staff, and the applicant was worth it. I would ask, because there are so many, and the hour grows late, five minutes for a group, three minutes for individuals. Please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Jennifer Hammond. My address is nine Iron Springs Road in Fairfax. Good evening, mayor and council members. I appreciate your focusing on this issue with such diligence. I'd first like to present a petition, both an online and a hard copy petition, which currently adds up to about seven hundred people, and that's still growing. So my notes got a little jumbled, because things changed tonight. But there was talk of the general plan, and what went into the general plan, and gathering input from the community on the focus for the town. And really, the general plan seems to really highlight independent businesses, pedestrian-friendly downtown, and environmentally friendly place to live. And, oh, thank you. And it's, you know, this, this project does not seem to sort of match those focuses that the general plan has highlighted. Really, it's, the goals of the community are quite different from having a service station right downtown, next to, you know, a vibrant pedestrian area. And there's, there's real concerns about that. Two, when you look at the general plan, the change for the zoning was really under a section that was about, was actually under policy 7.1.1, which says, "The existing village character of the commercial center of town shall be maintained and enhanced." And the zoning change was just a program with, under that policy. So the policy still exists in the general plan, and I'm just, I don't know what a gas station in our town center enhance the village character. I'm not so sure. This gas station would be right in the middle of town, where pedestrians and bike lists flourish. It would be the first thing you see when you enter the town, as you make a left onto Kraus or maybe eventually, or Klaus or eventually Bank. I do believe that the use permit should not be granted for this use, based on the policies that were set out in the general plan, to protect the character of our town. With the new conditions that were provided us earlier in the meeting, one of them was adverse effects to areas around the lot. And, you know, there's going to be a retail store. Could an adverse effect be the fact that we don't want our kids wandering around a gas station with traffic coming in and out, and so that, you know, for the purpose of going and buying an energy drink? You know, there's gonna be healthy products at this store, but I'm sure there's gonna be unhealthy ones, too. And again, two gas stations is plenty for a town of seventy-four hundred people. Fairfax values independent businesses, and this project would really fly in the face of those long-held values, and focus on town character. What if the other two stations went under? We would end up with three name-brand gas stations?
The power in the room, the clerk, is showing that, we've gone over the time, but you raised an interesting question at the beginning, and I want to make sure that the staff has picked up on it, so that they can respond to it, regarding the policies set forth in the general plan, and how they work vis-à-vis the codes that we've adopted. Did I characterize that correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay. When we come back in January, we will have that answer for you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes. Chris.
Members of the council, town staff, and fellow citizens, my name is Christopher Lang. I recently ran for town council, and I'm here tonight to speak to several specific issues. I walked the site and made a suggestion to the town manager. He said it was a good suggestion, but I didn't realize, I think it'd already been approved by the Planning Commission. That is, I measured the size of the street on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, it's seventeen feet wide to the curb in front of the gas station. There is an existing substandard sidewalk there that crosses the two driveway, opening and exit. And it seemed to me that the sidewalk coming from First Federal is four feet wide, so there should be a four-foot-wide sidewalk across that area. Now, I know this seems hazardous, but there's sidewalks in front of both exit and entrance of the other gas station, Catty Corner, to that one. So the main idea that I'm proposing tonight is that there be a real sidewalk, from the end of that sidewalk, over to the Broadway crosswalk. And I looked at the trees there, and the park, and the curb, and it would take very little alteration of the existing park-like setting of that tiny parking lot, to make a safe crossing across the foot southeast end of the gas station, and then into that little parking lot, and then right across the existing crosswalk at Broadway, and Bank Street, I guess. And the other point I wanted to bring up was that in the past, sometimes Fairfax has been inhospitable to people that want to invest here, and want to open a business, or build a home here, and stuffs like that. So caution us about that. And then, one thing I've learned about business, and I was on the Planning Commission, and the Chamber of Commerce and such, is two points. Number one, there's a sort of a critical mass, this was explained to me by some very experienced business people, I've been to a lot of seminars and such, that a town that has more than one gas station is actually in a beneficial position, because people know they can get gas there. It's, you have one gas station at one corner, okay, some people use it, some people don't. I'm a diehard customer of our little independent station. I haven't seen many other people here go there. Point being, that when there's three gas stations there in town, you actually get more customers coming into your town to buy gas. And the second point I want to make, we worked really hard on the Planning Commission and Chamber of Commerce, to try to capture some business from the people passing through Fairfax. Sir Francis Drake is a main arterial, and we have two million visitors a year at Point Reyes, and all, and we think it's beneficial to, we, whoever I'm representing now, the three hundred voters, think it's beneficial for us to get some of that business, some of those people passing through. And the main worry I have is, when we're riding, zooming down our bicycles and cutting that corner off of Drake onto Broadway, someone's gonna pull out from that gas station, and we're gonna have to slow down. You know I'm not a fossil fuel promoter. Thank you. Thank you.
Tony Udis, Seven Forest Terrace, Fairfax. The issue that raised here around this gas station is the LC Bank roadway project and pushing the street, Bank Street, across that gas station over to Sir Francis Drake. I live on Forest Avenue, and in this LC Bank roadway improvement project is talking about restructuring the traffic completely downtown, okay? I live up on Forest Terrace, and that means that people are gonna be using that more than having to come down here and drive around up to Bank Street and down LC Street and up to Deer Park. And the real issue here, I think, is that in this gas station development, is making it possible to continue the LC Bank roadway improvement. And I think that's quite deceptive to the public here, okay? It needs to be very clear that this plan to drive a Bank Street all the way through to Sir Francis Drake is gonna reroute and re-change the whole traffic flow of this town. And these people are doing studies here. What's gonna happen in those studies if this ever occurs? It's not, their studies are not gonna be worth nothing. So, you know, the real thing about this is, is the fact that this is about the LC Bank roadway improvement. And you know, of course, that Chevron gas, Chevron does not have a good track record as far as environmental things, but right next to it is Bank America, and they're just as much of a criminal as Chevron is. So, you know, it doesn't even matter who goes there, it's a gas station. Thank you.
Do we say the name? Mallory Guidheim, Willow Avenue, Fairfax. First, I want to say, I've been here for 40 years, and I've noticed what happens when it's summertime, and I'd like to know when the report, the traffic report was taken? Which, over which months? Who did that?
When? When? January 2003.
Just that month? Okay. Well, if you're here in the summer and you do these reports, I remember when the old gas station was there. And people coming back from the beach on a summer day, the traffic was so dangerous because they were sticking outside of that space onto Sir Francis Drake. So it backed up, people couldn't turn on that street until the next people could get their gas, but it backed up substantially. So if you want to do a traffic report, I suggest you do it when there's high traffic and at rush hour. Regarding the additives, you said you had personal experience with that for your own gas stations? Was that you? Who's talking about the additives? So, do you have personal experience about how that affects mileage for other gas stations? Because I'm a very serious car aficionado, and I have used, I used to use Chevron. And I will tell you that I have had no difference with the local gas, and they are still premium gases. So I would like to know how our local gases, what kind of additives, and how much they do compared to Chevron before you make a statement like that, that sounds like it's inclusive, and I don't think it is. What? The other thing is, I also want to know how much of the percentage of the revenue, sir? How much of the percentage of the revenue comes from-
Valerie?
The food part?
What I think might be best is, I think, why not put your questions down formally? Let's get them to the manager-
Okay.
And then we can include it with the 4,000 other questions we'll be asking.
I'm practicing to be a lawyer.
Really? Let me run you back on that one.
So how much of the percentage of the revenue comes from the food mart that's gonna be 1,000 square feet versus, I'm asking you, right?
Me?
No, you said to ask you.
No, no, no. What I'm recommending is that you put your questions into writing, perhaps an email, you can send it to the manager.
She's exceeded her 3 minutes.
Somebody's 3 minutes?
She's exceeded her 3 minutes.
She hasn't exceeded it yet.
Oh, go, proceed. Please, go right on.
So I forget the question?
But I would say, no. It's, he's not gonna answer your questions.
Okay. Well, I would like somebody to, at some point, say, I want to know the, how much revenue is coming from the food versus the gas? Because we have local people in town, people coming back from west or they want to stop at Chevron for gas, they're gonna, he's gonna have organic coffee and liquor and things that will affect our local merchants. And I don't think that is a good idea. Okay? You know, if you want to, and if you want to keep the quality of the town, then you do it not at the expense of the people in the town, even if you're gonna make a little more money. But I think decisions based on money and scarcity always negatively affect the town, and especially a town like this. And I don't think you want to affect the people who work here. People come into town, they might stop at Perry's, but they won't if they stop and get gas. They might want to go to the liquor store, they won't if you're selling liquor at your food mart. And a huge proportion of people spend money at food marts and gas stations, that's why they keep getting bigger and bigger. And so people coming into town, they go, oh, we'll get a snack, we won't go to the sleeping lady. And I think it's gonna affect every merchant in town. Because when you go through town, when you stop there, you're not really going through town. You're stopping in town and then you're gonna pass by the town. And it will affect everybody who is a merchant in town, because people are not gonna look at the stores.
Your time is up, but will you promise to send us the questions-
I will.
In the middle of your discussion?
Okay.
You promise?
I will do that.
Okay. And we will have answers for you.
Good evening. My name's Rachel Vaughn. I started the Facebook group. I live on Redwood Road in Fairfax, and I agree with all the issues that have been raised and that you indeed have been raising yourselves tonight about the zoning, the traffic, the parking, and so on. But I want to raise a slightly different issue. I'm not actually against gas per se, I'm not even against Chevron per se, I have nothing against you, Mr. Sulkey. I drive a car. But a gas station in this particular site in downtown Fairfax is completely insane for all the reasons that have already been raised. It seems also, and I've been amending my speech after Mr. Garrett's information and the information from Jim, it seems to me it violates all your four conditions for the use permit, especially point 3 against the master plan. But what I want to say is, while I've been talking to people in Fairfax over the last two weeks, about 75% of them were horrified by this project. The other 25% said something equivalent to, well, something has to go there. And they have a point, something has to go there. Here are some ideas, which we collected tonight. Because I think that to think that this gas, this site has to be a gas station in the future because it's been a gas station in the past is simply a failure of the imagination. A gas station does not represent better use of this site than the alternatives, and it does not enhance the community, which I believe is point 4. And whether that's Chevron or any type of gas, that stands. And I just wanted to point out that when the good earth moved and we turned down Terrapin Crosswoods, it wasn't because somebody said, hey, we really need a bike museum there. When 123 Berlinus Road was empty, no one said, we really need a boutique wine bar there. We won't know what we could put there until we say no to this proposal. We will never know what we could have had there until we say no to this proposal. And finally, in terms of the tax revenue, I want you to ask, I want to ask you to consider the clear indirect endangerment of all the other businesses, as the previous lady suggested. I'm shocked, we're talking about 1,500 extra new trips daily going through the downtown area of Fairfax, where our kids hang out outside the Scoop, where people queue up outside the Hummingbird, where we have cyclists going through all summer. And I propose that they will be, all those businesses will be severely impacted by all of the traffic pollution and all of the extra traffic going through that area. All those businesses that depend on pedestrian traffic are gonna be negatively affected. Idling cars cause an immense amount of pollution. So I don't think we should sell out our town for Chevron's tax dollars, especially as it may increase or decrease the tax revenue from our other businesses. And I will close with the fact that this proposal is not worthy of our town, it's not worthy of our values. We created our master plan for a reason, to protect the unique character of Fairfax, and this clearly violates all four conditions for the permit, especially master plan. So I think we need to stick to our guns, use our imagination, as evinced here, and say no to this proposal. Thank you.
Well, I can't see you guys when I put these on. You know, personally, I would like to see the property turned into a sanctuary refuge for rainbows and unicorns. However, we've created a world of ownership and property and money, and what we seem to hold dear and important is money and property. It's like we've turned the whole world pretty much into property that's owned and fenced off and pretty much commodified. We've commodified everything. I personally drive as little as possible. I just, I just do. Chevron's moniker used to be people do. It's like, you know, there's dog do, too, but people do. People do, and do, and do, and do. And as far as I can tell, we just take and take and take and take and take and take. And what do we give back? Where am I going with all this? It's been a gas station for as long as I can remember, years and years. Maybe it's not the best use of the land. And maybe unicorns and rainbows would be a good use of that land, but on the same token, maybe that's the best use of all of our land, rather than asphalt and pavement and a bunch of industrial chemicals that go into the land and don't exactly make anything livable in the future. It's like, what are we creating and what are we leaving behind? Comes right down to it. We're all hypocrites. We all drive, most of us drive anyway. Our whole world runs on gas. It's near impossible to exist in this world without being a pretty much primary consumer. Unless you're maybe going through a trash pile in India or China, trying to pick up pieces of glass or plastic or metal and, you know, make a few rupees. I see they're gonna sell alcohol and cigarettes and have solar panels on the roof. I wonder if they're gonna sell green condoms, too? I mean, we've got our, you know, community to watch out for, and there's issues. Personally, I despise Chevron, but I also despise BP, and I despise pretty much all the companies. But, it's not the companies, it's us. We're buying the crap. The only reason they're making and selling and pumping is because we're driving, we're hopping in our cars and going. What are we doing about it? Comes right down to it. It's like, it's not Chevron. What do we want? Do we really want the commons of nature to be used for gas stations and fenced-off lands and private property? Or does perhaps the commons of nature have more value to us than turned into gasoline and private property and parking lots in Costco? Perhaps there's more value in a whole nature somehow that isn't paved? And maybe what we need to do is rip up the gas station, the pavements, and start letting the water go back into the soil, and actually things grow? I'm not quite sure how to do that. My time seems to be up, and you guys are probably tired of listening to me, anyway.
Mark Squire, Free Stick Avenue in Fairfax. You know, I have a couple of things to say. You know, the chief one is that I've been a business owner in Fairfax for many, many years, 45, actually, I think. And I'm kind of amazed that, I don't think I would even think about being able to go to the town and say I wanted to open a business in town and have part of the parking lot be on town property. So even the very concept of that is kind of like shocking to me. And, so, when I was reading the planning commission reports and stuff, I kept looking for, where's the, is there compensation for us, you know, giving this business some of our public property? And I just don't even understand it. In fact, I even wonder, like, why do we keep including it in to the equation as though we need to think about the Bank Street coming out for us to use that property? Because it would be a great walkway to connect the two parts of town through, you know, immediately. Let's put some benches in there, some trees, you know? So, you know, that was one thing, I just wanted to, I truly don't understand it and would really like to understand the process involved in that decision. Because I, earlier I heard a little bit like it was gonna occur from the planning department or our staff would make that decision, and I think that that would be really wrong, because I think that's a piece of public property that we should all have a say in. And then, the-
Project, can we find out if they purchased that easement, the right-of-way over our property back in the day? We can't? You're shaking your head. We own it.
Yeah, it's public property.
We did title search and we own it, and it's a-
Yes, and did they, have they, I think what Mark's getting at, have they paid for the right to build or to operate over it?
You know, they got permits to remodel the Chevron, and the town issued them permits to configure it that way in that location.
Back a long time ago.
Long time ago, yeah.
So, I had a couple of comments, and I'm worried about my time disappearing. Yeah, okay, thank you. So, another comment I wanted to make is, I'm a proud host to an electric charging station. And one of the things I didn't realize before I got involved in it is that not only do I need a parking place for that, but I also need a handicap parking place for that. And I'm assuming this project already has a handicap parking place on it. So, I guess my question is, was all that figured out in this? You know, I haven't looked at the detail of the plan, but that doesn't leave a whole lot of extra places after that. So, that combined with the public land comment, I'm just kind of like looking at it and going, wow, this is not much space to put a gas station on it. And then the final thing I want to say is, I did look at all the stuff online, which everybody can read about the spill that Chevron did in town. And, you know, the bottom line for me is, it's like, you read it, and if I was drinking well water anywhere in the downtown area, I would not drink that water. Because, you know, I know that they've done what they can to remediate the situation, but there are still toxins in downtown Fairfax due to the Chevron having put them there years ago. So, to me, on top of the fact that we're giving them this land to use, we're giving somebody this land to use that basically polluted our downtown area. So, I kind of go like, what are we doing here? You know? And I apologize to the franchisee, because I know he's picking up that, you know, but it is Chevron coming into town regardless of the business arrangement. So, thank you.
My name is Peter, and I live on Klaus Drive, just a block from the proposed station. And I worked for Chevron. And I will never buy a drop of gas from the Chevron station. People in this room represent a growing global grassroots movement, speaking up against the rapacious operations of Chevron. This brand is a symbol of a corporation that has engaged in criminal behavior in Ecuador, Nigeria, Alberta, Richmond, and off her coast along the shipping routes. My sister was forced to leave her beautiful farm in Alberta because of the oil industry in the boreal forest. My best friend lives in Nigeria, and she has dedicated the rest of her life to fighting what Chevron has done to the most beautiful coastline of West Africa. As a 17-year-old, just out of high school, I worked on a Chevron tanker as an ordinary seaman. I was so proud of that job, until the day somewhere off the coast of Alaska, we discharged toxic, dirty crude into the ocean. It was contaminated material required by the Coast Guard to be offloaded in port. We were ordered to break the law, discharge it into the ocean because it was cost-effective and the Coast Guard wasn't around. I watched hundreds of seabirds land in the oil slick that calmed the waters. They were doomed. Every time I pass a Chevron station, I think of that. Thank you. What is happening in Nigeria, Alberta, Richmond, Ecuador is far worse than anything I witnessed. 50 years ago, Chevron has a long and sordid history of destroying so many beautiful places on Mother Earth, as revealed by the numerous lawsuits it has lost over the years. This is my chance to say, we don't want to see a Chevron station here in Fairfax. We want an electrical vehicle charging station. That's the future I'm fighting for.
My name is Ronnie Cruzman. I live on Portier Sav in Fairfax. I've been a resident for eight years. I just want to say, this is awesome. I mean, this is why I moved to this town. I used to come here on Fridays after work- I used to come here on Fridays after work. I used to live in San Rafael, and I'd walk around, and I'd be like, this place exists? You know, like, I saw some of the unicorns that the guy was talking about. And what I love about it is that it's independent. It's its own town. People in, back where I'm from, on the east coast, say, oh, so you live in the suburbs. I say, no, no, no. I live in my own town. It's a town. It's an independent place, right? So we can go through all the points. I actually had the same idea Larry had today. I said, wow, we could save twenty cents a gallon on gasoline. That sounds great. So I called Rhino in Fairfax, three sixty-five a gallon. I called Chevron in San Rafael, three sixty-eight a gallon. So there goes that argument. We heard the, the traffic experts say that, well, it's not really a science, it's an art. And I thought, well, that's a really highly-paid artist, then. But it is a science, of course, and we know that it's gonna increase traffic in our town. But I think there's a different point, which is that this does not fit with the character of this town. This is not why we all moved here. This is not why we want to stay here. And I think it would be egregious to approve this because of basically a technicality. The general plan was created with the intention of keeping businesses like this out of the downtown zone, and the Formula Business requirements were made in ordinance in order to keep businesses like this out of the zone. So because of a technicality for this to be approved, that, that would be egregious. And I would say, I don't know how often you see this many people out of town meeting, but I bet it's not that often. And so I know there's a couple lawyers on the council. I think you have enough fodder in terms of all four of the, whatever you call them, findings, to make your case and, and to reject this. And hopefully, I'm one of the people who's been working against this instead of working for other things. And so save us as much time as you can and reject this as quickly as possible. And maybe, maybe the silver lining here will be that people in this town will know that what they think actually matters, right? That this body, like, on some level, none of these arguments really matter. What matters is that this town opposes this idea, and this is a democracy. And so it's up to the elected officials in this town to follow through on the will of the people, and the people do not want this in their town. We do not want this. And I understand you need some legal foundation for that, and I think you have plenty for that. So I had all these things I wanted to say, but now I'm saying something else. My heart just really says, I love this town, so many people love this town. Help keep Fairfax awesome and reject this application. Do what you need to do and stand with the people. And if we are sued, I will say that I and many other people in this town will stand up to that, and we will support you, and we will have your backs for this. And I hope that doesn't happen, and I hope this applicant understands that he doesn't really know who he's messing with. This is a town of activists who've cut their teeth, probably since they were kids, on various global and national issues. You don't want to mess with us, right? So we're sorry this didn't work out. There's probably other places you can start a gas station. This isn't the place to do it.
Mayor and council members, Frank Agar, at thirteen minutes away here in Fairfax for over fifty years. I apologize for this hat I'm wearing. I spent about an hour at my dermatologist yesterday, and she burned off a number of precancers off the top of my head. I look like, I look like I've been in a train wreck. I was a member of the Fairfax Town Council when we adopted the Formula Store ordinance. The purpose and intent was to prohibit the very kind of franchise store being proposed here tonight. A Chevron Extra Mile, typically these kinds of operations at Starbucks, coffee vendors, and Burger Kings, Burger King fast food operations after they have once been established. A gas station is not a principal permitted use in a highway commercial zone. If the town can make the findings for approval, one could be built. In this case, the findings cannot be made. Approval would be a grant of special privilege for the following reasons. A significant, significant portion of the public street, bank street, is necessary to make this gas station function. No encroachment permit has ever been approved at that location, and the findings cannot be made to turn over the street to a private business. Approval would be direct conflict with the Fairfax Area General Plan regarding Formula Franchise Stores. It would be contrary to the official goals and policies of the town of Fairfax. It would create the first new franchise store since the ordinance was adopted back in the early, early, was it early 2000? I think it was around 2002. Development of the property with proposed use will create safety issues for pedestrians, putting them at risk either jaywalking or on Sir Francis Drake or Broadway. It will create an attractive nuisance for children. It would create a detrimental use of the land adversely impacting businesses at close proximity, such as the independent gas station at Claus and Drake. It will probably put that independent gas station out of business. This location is the entrance to downtown Fairfax from the west. And as such, you know, we, we need to, we need to be sure of the kind of message that we are sending to folks driving into our community. If anything, that portion of Bank Street should be added to the parcade. The town must reserve its legal options, and I'm concerned the State Streamlining Act may give automatic approval if the application is not acted on in a timely manner as, as dictated by the state law. The glaring Chevron an extra mile signs are not in keeping with the small-town character and spirit of Fairfax. And I'm not convinced that the application is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. I urge denial of the application tonight, and that the denial be without prejudice to allow the applicant to reapply for perhaps a different use. Thank you very much.
Sean Umfree Cascades, and my brain just left me, of course. A couple of points that I have are just regarding the design itself. It's, I'm not, I've been here all my life. I'm not really interested in seeing something that looks more strip mall being added to the center of Fairfax myself. I think we got enough gas stations here. I don't generally see lines coming out of these gas stations, which tells me there's not a deficit of pumpable gas in the town of Fairfax, which tells me any sales that go to the Chevron station would be sales taken away from the other two stations. If there's a million dollars a year between two, each get half a million in gross sales. If there's a third, each gets three hundred and thirty thousand. The concept of it bringing in brand loyalty customers that aren't normally here, I think, would be canceled out by the fact it doesn't look like a Chevron station. Bring it into town, because it won't look like a Chevron station. We'll get Chevron customers because they recognize Chevron stations. It's a cross-canceling issue. And since I don't have a written script, I'm only being semi-articulate here, but, you know, the issue of, the real estate agent's issue of gas prices. Wait, now I have to keep it civil. I'm forty-one years old. I grew up in Marin. I started driving with a license when I turned sixteen. I've been eyeballing gas prices everywhere since, because I'm, that's just the kind of cheap obsessive bastard I am. And I know where the cheapest gas is in Marin right now. I know where the cheapest gas was two months ago, and it's not where it is right now. But it is where it was for three years before that, and when somebody tells me that the Chevron prices in San Rafael being more expensive than the other prices around is a recent trend, I know it's bullshit. And I don't like being lied to. I don't. I've worked on cars. That's why people bring me, when, when, when girls bring me with them to look at used cars, because I know when a guy's talking bullshit about it. Same with contractor stuff, same with all this. If you say, hey, I want to do business here, I want to make some money, okay, then tell me what you got to say. Maybe it's agreed, maybe it's not. I mean, I'm not here to hug bunnies and all that. I mean, nothing against bunnies, but, you know what? I don't think we need another convenience store. You know, if this was just a couple of gas pumps and a guy pumping gas, it'd be one thing, but, you know, I'm just, well, you know what? I'm leaving the last eighteen seconds to someone who's more articulate right now, because I'm caffeinated out and pissed off.
Bruce Ackerman, Seventeen Valley Road. I can't promise to be more articulate, but one question, one question that I, that we've heard before is, as a general one, how does the general plan affect the decisions that we make in the absence of some of the programs of the general plan having been completely carried out? The one example being, of course, the rezoning of the CH to the CC, which has not, not been carried out, but it's in process in that the work is being worked on. There's no question that that will be done. It's not a, it's not a, an option in the general plan. It's something that's laid out that we will do. So the fact that it hasn't yet been completed, where does that put us in legal standing? But there's another question that's the, that I wanted to specifically raise, which is about the traffic. I think that the, the studies that are done on this proposal need to look not only at the current configuration, but at the proposed configuration, again, in the general plan. We have a, the, there was specifically described the maneuver that would be done by westbound traffic trying to get into this proposed station with the current configuration of the downtown, which would be to go down Claus, take a left on Claus, then take a right on Broadway, and then take a right into the driveway of the gas station. And then I would presume, go on and make a left out of the other driveway of the gas station, across the lanes of Sir Francis Drake, I didn't hear the rest of that story, and continue in their left-bound progress. That's a crazy enough maneuver as it is, it seems to me already. It goes right through an intersection, which is very problematic in our town. We've got that, that whole intersection at the end of Bolinas Road, and then you turn left, and then you turn right, and then you finally get on Drake. And now, as people come into there, it's problematic because, because there's no stop sign after you come off Drake, come into there. You would now have more traffic coming in in that direction, coming in from a different angle than they usually do, because usually people coming into town westbound don't enter that way, they enter at the other end of town. So suddenly, you'd have a lot more people coming into town on a left turn into, into Claus, where there's no stop sign there. So that makes our already very problematic and somewhat dangerous intersection even more problematic. But to add to that, I think we ought to look at that, at, look at another configuration, which is the configuration that was laid out in the general plan. And traffic studies have been done on that configuration. So again, I would say, like with the zoning, that's something that's in progress right now. It's something that we partly completed the analysis of that, and the general plan states that we will continue the analysis of that possible improvement of that messy intersection. And the improvement would be to open up bank to go through.
I hate, I always hate to cut you off.
Yeah.
But wait a minute. The question will be answered by the town council and town staff, which is, things that are in the general plan that are composed and adopted, as the town has, but have not gone the step that's required under law.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What, how is that tension resolved?
That seems the question, yeah.
That seems to be the question. And when we regather on January ninth, we will have that answer, a answer for you. January sixteenth, we will have an answer for, oh, sixteenth, fifteenth, gee, whiz.
Well, as Frank Agar said, there may need to be, you may need to consider how quickly you need to come to a resolution in order to, in order to avoid a legal-
As always, thank you, Bruce.
Good evening, council. My name is Seth Goddard, no relation, but I appreciate what you're doing for our name. I'm also here to oppose this applicant, and I have a couple questions, actually, I have one main question, which is, is there a time limit on your process besides simply saying open public? What is the time limit? I know that there's a reference to a time limit in the packet, but there's no specificity.
No, there's not a legal time limit. I mean, what we're proposing is you can, in January, you continue the public hearing to January, and that time, then you can make a decision, reevaluate where you're at, and then if you make a decision, how the process works is you would direct staff to adopt findings into resolution, bring it back to you in February. That's, that's the draft, draft findings in February, so that's the quickest that this could happen. January would be the next meeting, and then if they made a decision, then February for the final adoption of whatever findings or need to support, whatever deficient is made.
Or as the gentleman is suggesting, if that is too expeditious for the council, then it can be extended.
Sure, sure. If you couldn't make a decision in January because you needed more information, then yes, it could go to February.
Maybe the town attorney can suggest why, are we on any sort of a fast track here?
No, we're not. We're not under a fast track.
What about the, the traffic impact and the streamlining on that?
And I, I understand that, but it's gonna be part of the entire package, so it's looked at as a whole.
Thank you.
Good to know. Thank you. One of the, sort of the main point I wanted to make was that the Planning Commission seemed to think that this was in a commercial district. And staff also, staff's packet also implies that this was the central commercial district.
Staff, you want to grab that one?
Their resolution is for that. So their resolution, the first point of it, is actually wrong. So can you adopt something that is legally incorrect?
We started this evening, we started this evening by clarifying that-
But did they vote on that clarification?
We prematurely processed this with the Planning Commission as central commercial, not realizing that we needed to adopt the land use change via ordinance. So that was discovered during this exercise.
Right.
It was a mistake made by staff, my department.
Sorry.
We had unfortunate misinformation. I take responsibility for that error. I'm sorry for that error. The fallback issue is, considering this site as highway commercial, a gas station is not allowed by right. It requires a conditional use permit. So you still have to make the findings in those four categories to issue a conditional use permit or to deny it.
So do they have to go through the process again, then? I guess what I'm asking is, is their resolution null and void because it's not accurate?
I beg your pardon?
May I? Yeah, what the Planning Commission did is, has been called up, and so it's on directed referral. So this is what's called a de novo hearing, which means anew. It's everything fresh, new. It's a new look at it.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Okay. Well, then, I know I'm out of time, but you guys were talking, too. The other, the only two points I, the other two points, was that, you know, everyone keeps saying, we're gonna get brand gasoline. Obviously, brands, chain stores are not something that is in, within character of Fairfax. That's been made extremely clear by your general plan. The location itself is such a linchpin for your downtown plan that it would be a shame to see that thrown away. And the other point is that everyone keeps saying, this is the, you know, historically, this has been a gas station. Historically, it's been a gas, so therefore it should be gas again. But if we continue to repeat history and we don't learn anything, then what's the point? So please, learn something from that past history of having a gas station there. Do you want it again? Thank you. I don't, I don't.
Can you hear me? Oh, it sounds like you can. I'm Hannah Deles, Portius, Portius Avenue. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Thank you very much for having this hearing tonight. It's really important to the town of Fairfax. I wanted to talk about something that really hasn't been addressed tonight so far, and I want to frame it in the concept of public nuisance. And I think one of the challenges that we have at this time in history is that we have a whole set of laws in place that were created with a different world, that had different issues and different concerns, and things like that. And while we're trying to retain the character of Fairfax, we're also trying to adapt to a changing world. One of the ways the world is changing is climate change. And I have been spending an incredible amount of time through some work that I'm doing, looking at sea level rise maps of Marin County. And I've been looking at what the projections are for fifty years approximately, you know, thirty-six to, you know, seventy years from now. And they look really, really bad. They, we have potential neighborhoods, highways, all kinds of water, sewage, all kinds of things that could potentially be impacted, that would really be destructive to my quality of life as someone who will be alive at that time, my children's lives, everybody in our community, and the future of Marin as a beautiful place to be, a place that we all love, and that's why we live here. Gas stations, and particularly Chevron as a major driver in the international gas industry, are a huge driver of this change that is taking place. We have an opportunity here in Fairfax to make a stand and to say, we- We have an opportunity here in Fairfax to make a stand and to say, "We believe in a different future. We believe in a future where we don't have all that ocean coming into Marin. We believe in a future in which our children have a fair chance at an economic reality. We believe in small businesses here in our town, and we have a right to that future." Chevron, unfortunately, doesn't care about that future, and they show that through their polluting practices here in Richmond and throughout the world. We don't have to stand for that. We don't have to support that. We don't have to create a space for that in our community. And I think there are an incredible number of nuisances. We have a general plan that is adopted. I need to just point out, our plan is adopted. It's not something we're thinking about. That plan needs to be considered. Because staff has not had time to do the ordinance and get that all implemented, is an issue about maybe we need more staff. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be considering our general plan. So, I just wanted to real quickly say I'm concerned... I am a customer of Rhino. I do try to limit my climate change impact. I've just reduced my personal carbon in our household 5,500 pounds of carbon for this year, and we're really making an effort. But, I do support the local business when I do buy gas, and I think we should be thinking about the fiscal impact, which is also one of your criteria. Thank you very much, and look forward to seeing you in January.
My name is Hobo. I'm from Planet Earth. I want to comment on the plan as politely as I can. (Music) Shove a shiv in Chevron. Put a hex on Exxon. They're such a pain in the ass. And I must confess, la, when we each drive a Tesla, then we won't need any gas. So shove a shiv in Chevron. Put a hex on Exxon. Fairfax says we'll pass. Thank you.
Yeah, that is a tough act to follow. Thank you very much for having this special session tonight. My name is Brandon Barber. I have the best of two worlds. I get to enjoy Fairfax regularly and live in the valley just over the hill.
That's not the best living in your life.
Well, I... I'm deluding myself, just as many delude themselves that it's okay to continue to increase gas consumption when we're facing these terrible crises that Hannah just beautifully illustrated for us. I thought it was interesting that this came about because a Chevron station was being proposed. It wasn't another independent gas station. It wasn't a biodiesel station, which is a good idea as an alternative. But Chevron is a particularly egregious company. I mean, many of the things that I wanted to say tonight have already been said, but I think it's important to note that I'm kind of an expert on the egregiousness of oil companies, and Chevron in particular. I work for an organization that deals with the confluence of indigenous rights, environmental justice, and oil companies. So, I work for Amazon Watch. It's a great organization. We should all support it. And I was just in Ecuador, where ground zero for the big case that Chevron's waged for 20 years, trying to fight their culpability in what originally was a Texaco problem that they purchased. And to date, they've lost that case three times, but fully finally, really lost that case. And it was upheld by the Supreme Court of Ecuador, saying that they owe $9.5 billion to remediate and alleviate the suffering of the people who've been affected. 30,000 plaintiffs in this case. They have spent $4 billion, estimated, in fighting this case, and now fighting another case to smear the lawyers on the side of the plaintiffs, just to avoid their culpability. Now, I don't have to go into great detail about how rotten a company Chevron is. You can ask Gail McLaughlin, your colleague, who is the mayor of Richmond. Richmond has had its fair share of problems with Chevron, and Chevron does its best to continue to buy their favor. And that's what they always do. They have deep, deep pockets. And when the applicant said that he was trying to help us do business with Chevron, it really gave me the willies. I don't want to do business with Chevron. I don't want to do business with any of the oil companies that would put profits over people. And given the situation globally with climate change, given the situation with a town like Fairfax that is really leading the way forward for the world that we want to live in, I was grateful that it was a Chevron station that was being proposed, because it really helped to galvanize a great amount of concern and support to push this permit away and to find a better use for this space. So, that's really all I have to say. I'm glad that we're here, and I'm glad that you're all obviously reasonable people looking to do the best thing for Fairfax. So, I wish you all the luck, and I will be here for the next one and the next one, so that we can finally get the lemonade stand, or the little park, or something that we want to see to help represent what the world needs to be moving forward. Thanks.
My name is Lina Maria Estrella, and I live on 19 Muriel Place. I came from soggy Seattle, where I lived for 30-plus years. I'm 60, and I only got around by busing, biking, and walking. I never owned a car until I met my husband, and we have one that runs on biodiesel. And we get it from Biodivas in San Anselmo. So, one of the main reasons that we chose to live in Fairfax is because it is a small town that does take great pride in establishing and supporting locally-owned businesses. It fosters an atmosphere of creativity and respect for all people. It honors and protects the wildlife that live here, and it practices good stewardship of the natural resources in this beautiful environment we all share. Chevron is the largest company in California and the biggest polluter in the world. And much of what I'm saying has been said before, but it certainly bears repeating. Furthermore, Chevron is guilty of terrible human rights violations around the world. Chevron paid for, housed, fed, and directed Nigerian military forces who shot and killed protesters staging a peaceful sit-in on a Chevron oil derrick in Nigeria. The villagers took Chevron to court to hold them responsible, lost the case, and now Chevron is suing the village for $500,000 for expenses. As a point of reference, Chevron makes that amount of money every 10 minutes, 24/7. And these are people who are so poor, they don't even have access to safe drinking water. Shall we talk about the 30,000 Ecuadorians who won a landmark judgment against Chevron and their predecessor in 2011? After nearly 20 years since the case was filed in 1993 stemming from dumping toxins and spoiling 1,500 square miles of pristine rainforest and indigenous people's habitat, Chevron still refuses to pay for cleanup. In fact, they have gone so far as to pull assets from Ecuador so that the Ecuadorians would then have to pursue enforcement of the judgment in countries where the company maintains assets. Our town council here in Fairfax has traditionally been progressive, approving a moratorium on smart meters, banning plastic bags, staving off spraying of insecticides on our plants, approving a no-flyover zone against chemtrails, and not allowing chain stores. So, why? Why would Fairfax even consider putting Chevron, the biggest polluter in the world and human rights abuser, front and center in our town? Having a major chain name like Chevron sets a dangerous precedent for other chain stores to come calling and sends the wrong message to our children about honoring and taking care of this earth and each other as we are all connected. Let's look for a positive alternative. Why not have the Chamber of Commerce, the town council, and our community come together to find creative ways to encourage support of the two existing local independent fuel stations we already have? There are alternatives. Take a look at the garage, an artist collective bringing about community and showing us what beautiful things can be done with an old gas station. And these are beautiful examples here. Thank you.
My name is Mark Vendetti. I live on Muriel Place in Fairfax. My first two comments are regarding the planning commission staff report. Section 1, the use permit, and this really just deals with the inadequate parking on-site. I went by the site yesterday to take a look at what they were talking about with the cars pulling out of the dedicated parking spots for the convenience store, and it really is true. The cars that will be backing out of those spots in front of the convenience store will be running right into the sidewalk and then backing out further right into Sir Francis Drake, creating a real problem for cyclists and cars coming down the road there. Furthermore, even though westbound traffic is not supposed to cross the double-yellow line, we all know that that does happen, and it's such a tough intersection right there to begin with that when and if that should happen, it could really seriously create a bad accident right there. It's already a messed-up intersection as it is. This alone could be reason enough to deny the project. First... Secondly, in the formula, a business use permit section on paragraph 8, the town's question, "Is it likely this business will cause one or more existing businesses in town to fail?" The town's short answer was, "No." But, my comment is that since the owner of the property has already stated his price for gas will be less than the other stations in town to provide more competition, and his gas is perceived to have a higher quality due to the major branding, he will get more business than the other stations, which are already not so busy. This will very probably result in one or both of the other stations folding. Then, a couple of just practical things. Do we really need a third station in Fairfax? Today's cars are more fuel-efficient, less people are driving. We are trying to encourage alternative forms of transportation, and electric cars, over the years, will gradually be overtaking gasoline. I think we already have plenty of gas in Fairfax. My last point is, why would we want the brand name of Chevron Oil in Fairfax? A new study from the Climate Accountability Institute researched who in the world is mostly to blame for global greenhouse gas emissions. They found that only about 90 large corporations are responsible for almost 2/3 of the total global emissions. So, who is the number-one worst offender? Want to take a guess? Drum roll, please. Chevron is the number-one worst polluter in the world, following the land, air, and water in more than 180 countries around the globe. Given all this and more that you have heard tonight, I respectfully ask the council, please do not allow Chevron a foothold in our gentle town. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Giancarlo Ferraro Jr., and my family owns a gas station in downtown Fairfax, the Rhino Gas Station. The reason why I'm here tonight is to defend our business from the possibility of going head-to-head with a person or people who own a vast number of gas stations. Putting such a large player of Mr. Salkey's stature would put pressure on our business. The reason for it being is because from doing due diligence on the internet, I saw that they own gas stations in Fremont, Santa Clara, Hayward, El Cerrito, Petaluma, Berkeley, Mill Valley, and in San Rafael. We own a gas station, a business, here, locally. He's able to generate revenue on a vast... Vastly different than we do. His model's based on large volume, and thereby, he can own... Put price pressure on whomever he pleases. We do not have that luxury, nor does any business here in Fairfax have that... Has that luxury of going against an entity that owns a large number of businesses. No different than having a Taco Bell in front of Grizzlies, a McDonald's in front of M&amp;G Burgers, a Subway in front of Parry's. It's no different. Volume-generated versus independent, locally-owned business. As a person who has owned a business here in Fairfax for 20 years, we are what is Fairfax, which is independent and unique. An addition of this Chevron gas station would be one more page in a portfolio of many undistinguishable properties to its prospective owners. I don't know if that would be Fairfax. Thank you.
I have a question... Quick question.
Yes.
Is your... Is your gas station up for...
Yes, it is.
Are you in escrow?
Yes, we are.
Would you be so kind as to tell us? Who...
Why?
No. I'm sorry to see you go. My... Who's buying it? Will it stay as an independent?
Right now, it's currently in escrow with a gentleman that is... That was here tonight and is a Fairfax... A Fairfax citizen that does not live no... No farther than a five-minute drive from here.
Will it stay independent like you?
Absolutely. Yes. Because he does not know... He does not own any other gas stations. It's up to the owner of the property to make it a branded gas station. And that gentleman has shown no interest in that, and he's willing to go forth and keep it an independent gas station, having the lease with him.
Will he promise to continue to smog my bug?
If it passes the emissions, surely.
You've got to speak to the gods on that one.
Thank you very much.
My name is John Romadis. I live on Madrone Road, and I'm against the gas station. And just thinking, like, kind of what's to get... What's being gained by it? Obviously, the gentleman gains a profit by having a business, but what does Fairfax gain, if anything? I mean, there's a kind of a box there, and some traffic. We'll get a lot of traffic, I believe, which can't be good, idling cars. I commute, and it can get kind of hectic in the afternoon. So, I would just ask that you do everything you can and not give an inch or anything technically, legally, just to keep the gas station from being built, let's say.
My name is Jane Richardson-Mack. I have been living in Fairfax since 1980. I'm a homeowner. I have never had to wait in line for gas, ever, at any time of day or night with the two gas stations we have. I do not believe we need a third gas station, especially if cars are going more toward electric. To have a Chevron sign in downtown Fairfax, to me, would mean we have lost our soul. We will have sold out just for money. Because the town needs money. It makes revenue. I don't care if I pay a penny or more for gas, or five cents even. I'll pay a dollar more just to not have that company, that logo, in the middle of our beautiful Fair... Fairfax. I'm an artist. I can't... To see that, I'd lose my soul, and I charge you with keeping the soul of Fairfax. Don't let that symbol stand in our downtown Fairfax. It's the worst possible thing that could happen. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Congratulations. I'm sure you're glad this is your first meeting. I live on Glen Drive, and I'm not speaking for myself this evening. I'm speaking... In case I need a few more seconds, I hope you'll indulge me. The chamber's motto is supporting a thriving, sustainable local economy. And we, over the past two months, took advantage of the opportunity to meet both with the owners of the Rhino Station, as well as Mr. Sulkey and his brother, to learn about their proposals. The chamber has not taken a position on this issue at this time, but we wanted to take the pulse of our members in town, the business people. And so I'm going to quickly read the very short, or excerpt from the very short email that we sent out on Tuesday. Dear Fairfax Chamber members, you may be aware that the Fairfax Planning Commission recently approved an application, blah, blah, blah. That decision's been appealed. I don't have your language, but we know what you mean. And the matter will come before the Fairfax Town Council. Part of the chamber's role is to support our members, improve and maintain the business climate in Fairfax, and work with the town and the community to enhance town services and community benefits, supporting a thriving and sustainable local economy. A new Chevron station in town may pose benefits and drawbacks. A derelict site would be improved, sales tax revenue to support town services may increase, additional patronage may be captured. On the other hand, toned-down brand signage would be visible downtown, and Fairfax's other gas stations, convenience stores, and delis may see diminished sales. The chamber would like our members' input before the December fourth council meeting. So I'd like to report on what that survey revealed. And it was that we got a very high response rate in two days, and it was forty-one percent of the recipients of the survey responded. And I beg your pardon, I misspoke. It's thirty-five percent of the recipients responded. And the question was, do you think that a new Chevron station in downtown Fairfax would be good or bad for business in Fairfax? And seventy-five percent of the respondents said that they thought it would be bad for business, and the twenty-five percent remaining said that they thought it would be good for business. We didn't give a don't-know option. So just add that to your thinking as we go forward in this deliberative process. And I would also like to say that, as business people, we like to challenge assumptions because a lot is writing on what we assume, and we sometimes don't see it. So we would like to make sure that you are challenging the assumptions of three hundred thousand gallons per month of gasoline should be or could be sold in Fairfax, but only one hundred thousand are being sold now, per month, I believe is the numbers that I got. So I think that's a large assumption. We'd like to get some backup on that. And one of the other statements that I heard tonight was that another station, a Chevron station, would bring a more competitive marketplace to town. And how that it would cause the other stations, by inference, to reduce their prices to be competitive. But how do we know that that is going to not violate one of the principles that requires that we not diminish or damage existing economic interests in town? And also, how can we assume that a new Chevron station in town is going to meet the goals and objectives of the community and the town character? So thank you for your hard work, and we'll see you again in January.
Hi, my name is Wendy Botwin, and I, this is actually my five-year anniversary of moving to Fairfax today, from Oakland, from ten years of living in Oakland. And when I moved here, I knew I was, finally had found my dream town that I'd had since I was a kid, that I didn't even think existed. And this is exactly the opposite of what I moved here for. And I'm really grateful that, to be, that you're, that this process is the way that it is, that we're all finally finding out what's going on, and that you want to hear our voices. And I can tell you that we just found out about, I mean, the town, most people in the town really just found out about this in the last couple of weeks. And I've been talking to every single person I see, and I can tell you that, I know we had a lot of people here tonight, but there were a lot more people that would have wanted to be here. I haven't heard a single person say that they loved the idea of Chevron coming to our town. And there have been claims that this station will beautify and modernize our town, and to me, it's just going to be an ugly eyesore right in the center, and completely destroys our sense of beauty here. And it's not why we came here. I don't really buy the, I agree with everybody and really, really appreciate what everybody before me said, and I don't want to repeat any of that. But I also don't agree that it's going to be better and cheaper gas, based on Chevron stations that I see all over the place, and I do drive. And more than anything, I'm really disturbed by Chevron's greenwashing that's clearly going on here, too. And changing colors and signs and solar panels and bicycle racks, I don't, I don't see that as, to me, it's just part of the greenwashing campaign that Chevron does in every way possible. And I've seen it in person. I was in Chevron's headquarters years ago when they had their environmental awards. And it's pretty, it's just, it's so obvious, though, all of the ways that they, they try to couch themselves as environmental, and you've heard all of the evidence that that's not true. And I want to see the site cleaned up, and I, there are a million other ways that I think that we could use that site. And I actually think it would be better off the way it is right now than turning it into a Chevron gas station. And I, I also, I also really want to hear what the franchise is requiring, what Chevron is requiring and not requiring, because I'm definitely hearing contradictions in the things that I'm hearing tonight and at the planning council meeting that I listened to three hours of online before coming here.
My name's David Haskell, and like you, I'm addicted to fossil fuels. I also want to thank the council. You deal with minutia to a great extent, whether it's potholes and sidewalks. You care about the little things, and I appreciate that. But you also have a mandate to also recognize that we have a much bigger issue here. In the, in the global context, we are faced with a climate chaos that's unprecedented. Over the last six months, we've had a rapacious delivery of bad news after bad news after bad news after tipping point is impossible. I go to hear Bill McKibben, and he says the one thing we have to do is divest. We must take all our money out of the fossil fuel industry now. I hear Kuminaidu, the president, the executive of Greenpeace, in his exquisite voice. And he says to all of us, and says to you, the politicians, because it's you, the politicians, who represent us, who speak from our heart, and I know you guys, and I know your hearts are good. And Kuminaidu said very clearly, and it stuck to me like super glue. Any future investment in the fossil fuel infrastructure, be it the Keystone Pipeline, be it a fracking of well, or being the building of a new service station in Fairfax, is a direct investment in the demise of our children. Thank you very much.
I don't know if I can be cogent after, what has it been, four or five hours of something very, you know, really very emotional, and seeing everybody drain out, and, and not having a chance to hear everybody, or for everybody to hear everybody, is sad. But anyway, you just mentioned children. And I'm new to Marin. I was raised in Oakland, from Mexico City, raised in Oakland, and lived in that chemical thing called Houston, and had a heart attack there, even though I seem too young and too fit, because of what it does to your, your health, and because of the values of a city like that. So as somebody with a background, a little background in anthropology, let me tell you that there are loads of families moving here, attracted to the smallness and the cleanness and the nature. I teach, I'm a volunteer Spanish teacher for English speakers in a local school. And these schools are sometimes stuff to like double what they were designed for, because so many people want to bring their children here, and they want to bring them here so that they can walk, you know? Which is why my spare time sometimes with my boyfriend is cleaning the leaves that fall in the playground for the kids, or cleaning the park over by, you know, you're built by the town, you know, place. And when you walk around a lot, and when you look at people a lot, you're not driving through in your car, you get a different perspective, and you see that it is invaluable to keep those trees around for the kids to experience. And you see that if there is a convenience store, even a small one with no gas station, what you will invariably find as an archaeologist is tons of cigarette butts, tons of wrappers, tons of crap all over nature. And so you clean it, and you clean it, and you clean it, and you get to the point, you're so happy when you get to the point where you think you see a piece of cigarette filter that's falling apart, and it's really a feather. Or you think you see, you know, a brown paper wrapper, and it's really a leaf. And you know that a child will see that. And you know, and I'll shut up now, but you know that the child will not go fill themselves up with sugar, and we're condoning that the more we have these things. You know, you actually can suggest to a child in, in this town, one of the few, you know, hey, have a, have a Pink Lady apple, you know, have a Coco Bliss, you know, bar. And there's a little bit of something to back you up. But the more you have the alternative, it's going to, it influences us disproportionately to how many convenience stores you have. You know, one convenience store, you're putting something out, children are not really great at resisting, you know? And parents really don't want their kids to do, and now parents have, so anyway, this is just my modest view as someone from outside who is looking at your culture and looking at your town, and thinking, you know, what you want to promote and what you don't want to promote. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Richard. I live at 27 Sequoia. I'm probably one of the newer members of Fairfax. I moved here ten months ago in February, and after twenty-five years in the city, and as many people have spoken very eloquently tonight, I moved here for mainly the reasons and values that have been stated and the ethos that is contained here in Fairfax. I don't know that I have a lot of new insights after everyone has commented, but there's two things that strike me tonight. One is that for this project to move forwards and be approved, it's, it seems to me that the majority of people that live in Fairfax should find it appropriate and desirable. And I don't know that that's the case right now. I'm obviously been following the, the opponents to it and the different foment that's been happening on the internet. My sense of it is that most people do not feel it's appropriate and do not find it desirable. The second thing that strikes me is that there should be some clear, strong, and unique benefit to this happening. And I haven't heard but really one assertion tonight from one of the gentlemen over here that, of anything that even remotely sounded like a benefit, and that was something to do with tax revenue. I thought I heard a number like twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a month, and I would love to know more details about that, and if that can actually be measured, proven, demonstrated in some way. I would still oppose it, because I don't think that that number is worth the negatives and the downsides to what would occur. But I think it should be really, really clear for everyone that there's an actual benefit to this. I don't think anyone can make the case that another mini-mart selling Snickers and beer and cigarettes is something that we lack here. I don't think that there was a long line of people rushing town council to say, we're in desperate need of another, another gas station and a mini-mart in town, that, you know, we're lacking, there's something missing here that we, that we need. So please demonstrate and explain to us the benefit, how this is good for our town, how is this good for everyone that lives here? Because it's not, it's not clear to me. And the only thing I've heard is something about tax revenue, and that sounds really murky, and anyone can assert a bunch of numbers. And I think many, many others have already spoken to the fact that, you know, one business adds a little revenue, and other businesses go out of business. What about the Fairfax market? They're going to sell everything that, that mini-mart sells, or the hardware store. There's not going to be a single unique item there. If they carry some organic coffee, we've got that covered elsewhere in town. So I don't, I don't see anything new, different, better, special. This is a beautiful map right here to begin to demonstrate the other possibilities. So I hope you all do the right thing here, reject this. Thank you.
My name's Sean Chertell. I've lived in Fairfax for two and a half years, and I'm going to be very brief as the last speaker. I share all of the same sentiments. To my knowledge, nobody came here to speak in favor of the new Chevron station. I think it's pretty clear how the town feels about this. I just wanted to raise one specific point. We heard a lot from traffic engineers about the findings that there would be a very negligible impact on traffic in the area. And then, if, is that correct? Overall, pretty negligible? Yeah? And then we heard Mr. Sulkey speak at length about his business model, which is to really have a very high volume of business, lower profit margins, higher volume. These two things seem to be in conflict to me, and maybe that's something that you could look at more deeply before approving this. Thank you.
And with that, we will bring it back to council. I remind you that we will be keeping the public hearing open. It's not closed. So for those who didn't get the chance to speak this evening but wish to do so in January and beyond, have the opportunity certainly to do so. I was particularly taken with one of the speakers who was concerned because of the late hour that others might not have heard what others had said. But I believe that we do maintain it on our website, and certainly there's an opportunity for everybody in the town that didn't have the opportunity to be here this evening to, to follow it one more time. Sorry, Sarah, we're done.
You have to know it's also available on the website as well as video.
Okay.
You have to hold you to every speech on video.
Okay. And with that, it, the suggestion is that perhaps council might have further questions that they want to direct to staff at this time, to make sure that when we gather again in January, all questions, or at least as many questions as possible, are being addressed by staff and also the applicant.
Just a few things for staff. I'd like to make sure that we could have a clear evaluation of the comparison of...
Guys, this is distracting.
What, I was trying to see the exhibits of our market. They've gone hard on the records.
And I don't want to let the evening close without this exhibit somehow being part of, what do we have to do? That's my turn.
Counsel?
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, I apologize for the interruption. I was trying to explain to them that if we have some smaller sizes, we can certainly include them in the record. The record's not closed and so there's no need to put anything in tonight, but I understand this concern and desire. So I guess we can note that these, the things that will be given to us in a eight and a half by 11 size were submitted on the evening of December 4th. Is that okay?
So just briefly, I know the evenings, I would like to have in January, have more information from staff on, one of the things, when I was on the planning commission and it seems like it's, we always worried about presidential decisions. And what I didn't see, and perhaps it was done but I missed it, was that I'd like to see in January having kind of a real comparison of, for example, the extra mile comparison to other retail convenience stores. Are we looking at something very different? You know, are there differences in the usage for the extra mile? The other thing, just in general, the comparison to the other gas stations in town, for example, the Rhino gas station doesn't have a convenience store, it has a service bay. The North Bay Gas has a very tiny convenience store with, I believe in the planning commission, we allowed two signs within the size limits. So I'd like to hear more in January about kind of a comparison with more like sorts of businesses to see if there is some, something different or some special privilege we were looking at for this. I think I had one more thing. Well, I don't know. Some of these things were mixed with applicant questions, but I think for now that that's enough. I've spoken a long time tonight, but maybe we could have more clarity on that. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yeah, actually, I didn't, I didn't get to ask. How often would the tankers be coming through and delivering the gas?
An average delivery of a fuel tanker is 8,800 gallons, about 9,000 gallons. So I'm assuming they're going to do 150,000 gallons divided by 9,000 gallons, divided by 9,000, so that's like 13, 14, 13, 14 loads. So we're saying maybe a delivery every other or third day. And the delivery time, we spoke to the planning, to the planning commission, I have control over that with Chevron bringing delivery trucks during, not during rush hours, same thing similar that you're doing to the new center that went in. So yeah, it's typically once to two or three days delivery, so not that often.
Okay. Yeah, and I would just like to learn more at the next meeting about if, how we're going to discern whether there's space to do the turnaround and if it's determined that it requires that right-of-way, then what is the plan in terms of tankers turning around and what businesses would be affected? Fairfax market or the Fairfax cyclery?
Sure. We'll get that information.
Making sure that people are informed that this is part of the plan if, if there isn't that space. So if we could, yeah, learn more about that from staff.
Just to make sure that we get a survey, there may be one that's already been recorded of the right-of-way and not just the street extension, the right-of-way. Okay?
You want it staked in the field, is that what you're asking to be done?
Either staked in the field or overlaid on the proposed plan.
We did, we required a survey and it was overlaid on the plan. You brought up the fact that the, I believe you brought up the fact that the existing bank street in front of the Bank of America is wider than what was shown on the plan. And we'll come back with more clarification and documentation on this. It's my understanding that the original easement was narrower because subsequent to the original easement being created, Bank Street was widened. So the original curb line is what distinguishes the line going through the gas station, but I'll find the documentation.
Right. And yeah, I just want to, I want to get exact width on the right-of-way.
We believe we have that. I just want to articulate, we have a survey of record. We corrected the drawings during, through this process because it wasn't accurately shown, but I want to get the documentation for you to verify that the line is different from the existing Bank Street because of the widening of Bank Street subsequent to the existence of that easement being created.
Okay. And if we could get it staked, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Okay?
With that, we will continue the public hearing to our January 15th date. Thank you all for a long evening. And the council now moves on to numbers 18 and 19. You want to take a break?
I got to.
Oh, you got to, let's take five. And move on to number 18 on the agenda, which I'm not going to read a second reading by title only of ordinance number 773. Mark, you got a little staff report for us?
Not much of a staff report, just that we introduced it at the last meeting and I'm here to answer any further questions that you might have about this.
Does anybody have questions of staff on this matter?
No.
Does anybody in the public have any questions about this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it...
This is the actual public hearing for this matter, so you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, we're opening up the public hearing on number 18. Would anybody like to comment upon that?
Hold on.
So, you got questions?
Yes.
Oh.
I just wondered if I could ask, I just today was learning about Cal Green Tier 1.
Okay.
And I didn't know how that related to all of this, given that it says green, the green, the green building standards, but how does that work with green, Cal Green?
It just makes it, there's a lot more requirements involved with Tier 1.
So are we moving in that direction? Because I, today, it was at the county meeting that there are cities that have moved forward with Tier 1. I think San Rafael just did.
Quite a few of the other cities are going forward with Tier 1.
Yeah. So are we considering or where are we at with that?
That's planned to...
To move that way?
Yes. Yes, that's what we've recommended.
Okay.
When you're saying it's recommended, does that mean we adopt it as part of this or is next year or what's...
Yes, you're adopting it now.
We are doing that right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Doing that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Page three, we did a red line at the council's request and you could see it actually says we have added the Tier 1 mandatory measures.
Oh, excellent. Sorry. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none and having opened and closed the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved what?
That we adopt the ordinance number 773 to adopt the 2013 California Building Standards Code, California Code of Regulations, Title 24, Parts 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12, which consists of the California Administrative Building, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, Historical Building, Existing Building, Green Building Standards and Reference Standards Codes and adopting the 2012 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code.
By title only.
By title only.
Do you have a second on that? Could I, I've got it, well, Jim's not here, okay? On page three, on page five, newly created second units, is that statutory language?
Mark, isn't this the section of the fire code that we just added into the building code?
That's correct.
I see.
Just making the fire code, building code so that there's consistency. It's the exact same wording that's in the fire code.
This actually came up in the past as to what constituted newly created meant in legalizing something that existed for decades was seen as newly created under that fire code and that was a problem earlier.
Right. The distinction is between newly constructed versus newly created and I...
The interpretation in the past is if there was not a second unit there previously is what newly created has been interpreted as.
It's pretty ambiguous, but maybe that's good.
Well, if you add a single residential unit and then you added a second unit, that would be a newly created second unit.
Right, right, right. But if we, if we grant amnesty to a pre-existing unit, I mean, there's an ambiguity there and maybe we should just go with it.
Yeah, I would agree with your assessment. I think what we're thinking about doing is what you've done in the past as a council is ultimately when we look at second units again, we'll come up with amnesty ordinance that is clear and exempts the certain units for a certain period of time.
All right.
So we could bring in units that are currently illegal to make them legal.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Further questions of staff? We have a motion read, a second caller for motion caller, second read. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to number 19 or as we might call it, the chief's song.
I will, I will keep it very brief. This is the adoption of the fire code as with the building codes. It was, you had the introduction in the first reading of the November 6th meeting. The staff report explains the changes. The local amendments included in the ordinance does not represent any significant changes from your current code. As I mentioned at the last meeting, there were two minor changes to regarding fire hydrants and locations for sprinkled buildings. The town attorney staff did clean up some language, clarify penalties and streamline enforcement. And we are repealing a couple of sections that don't apply anymore because with the, with the new codes that have been adopted, the new building code, they weren't necessary. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of the specific items.
Any questions of the chief? Seeing none, we'll see if there's any thoughts from the public. Seeing none, opening the public hearing to take public testimony, hearing none and seeing nobody here, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council and I'll entertain a motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay, I will move adoption of ordinance number 774 to adopt the 2013 California Fire Code, portions of the 2012 International Fire Code and Appendix A of the 2012 International Wildland Urban Interface Code by title only. Wave for the reading.
Second.
We have motion read, second caller, all in favor?
Aye.
By title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all, but before we leave, we do adjourn in the memory of Nancy Helmers, Fairfax resident for over 40 years and environmental advocate. Take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we'll go read caller on that one. Thank you all.